We'll have the city.
The door has.
Senior provide the invocation.
Let us take the attitude of prayer. The gracious God, we humbly thank you for the many blessings that you and you alone have bestowed upon our lives individually, as well as collectively. You have empowered us tonight and have given us all that we need to have an outstanding meeting. Let your wisdom fall afresh upon us. Let your knowledge explode. Continue to bless our mayor and councilor God in the most spiritual way as necessary. And we will all benefit, oh God, from all that is done this day. So we give you the praise and let us all say amen.
Thank you Pastor Henry. We'll now have the roll call for tonight's work session. The Honorable Catherine F. Ryle, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gums, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present, present.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four. The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five. The Honorable Natasha Williams, District Six.
Present.
And the Honorable Mayor Khalid.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We have a very exciting meeting. We're going to be talking about public works and our parts through our URA, as well as our hearing some zoning and alcohol cases. I do want to just to point, uh, point your attention to the back, those of you all who are watching online. You're just, you're missing out. But, um, we, early voting does, has already begun. Some of our state house and state senate districts, as well as your county commission district, some of those numbers may have changed. So here in the back, and we're going to get these available online as well, uh, you will see, um, maps. So just on a break or when you get a minute, make sure that you go back there. Make sure that your voting district is still, uh, the voting district that you believe that it is. We do have early voting happening now through the twentieth at, uh, Southwest Art Center, South Fulton Annex, Welcome Mall, uh, Rec Center, Flat shows library, Wolf Creek Libraries, and about seven other places on the south side. There are over thirty offices for you to make selections for. So make sure that you visit the Secretary of State's website, www.mvp.sos.ga.gov, uh, to do your research before you go vote. We are short some poll workers for Election Day, so we have Fulton County here in the back. They are paying up to two hundred and seventy-five dollars per day for qualified, uh, positions. Um, and you just also get the, the reward of doing service by securing the vote here in South Fulton for our community. So if you have some time, please visit with them as well. And with that, Mr. Clerk, go ahead and sound the first item.
Next item on the agenda is tonight's monthly reports. The first monthly report will be the Finance Monthly Report presented by Karen Slaton Dixon, the Finance Director.
Mayor, City Council, I'd like to present to you the March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, um, financial. On, um, slide two, it shows that we've collected ninety-five percent of the projected, um, property tax. Uh, we've collected still about a hundred and two percent.
Still about a hundred and two percent. Still about a hundred and two percent. Still about a hundred and nine. Still about a hundred and nine. Still about a hundred and nine. Still about a hundred and nine.
Sorry.
Still about a hundred and nine.
Sorry.
Still about a hundred and nine. Uh, 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 still about a hundred and nine.
Thousand seven hundred and three dollars over what was billed out for twenty-twenty-one in property tax. And so we showed ninety-nine thousand three nineteen collected from the west side, um, TAD, and thirty-six thousand five forty-eight from the east side TAD. In our next slide, we show the general fund year-to-date local option sales tax, which is lost. And we're showing a collection of twenty-five point sixty-five percent over this time in the fiscal year twenty-one budget. On our next slide, this is our general fund year-to-date T-SPOS. And so we're showing a collection of eighteen point forty-six, um, over this time in March of fiscal year twenty-one budget. And on the next slide, this is just our general fund, um, summary of expenditures, which show each, um, department based on the expenditures that were on slide three. On this slide here, this is our summary of revenues and expenditure for all funds as of, um, March thirty-first. And then on slide nine, we show on the, our cash balance report as of March thirty-first, we show a total of one hundred and sixty-eight point five million spread over the various accounts, which is an increase of about one point one million over last month. On, um, slide ten, this is our confiscated asset report. They have a balance of two eighty-three, two ninety, um, which thirteen thousand three eighty-five came in from cash that was confiscated. And so just want to give an update on the ARP funds. We're, we're still at the same position of where we spent fifteen thousand dollars in, um, November, and then a hundred thousand toward the vaccine incentive program. And, um, from the fire department, they're saying that's going to kind of slow. So we did get approval that those funds can be used for people who actually get vaccinated with the, um, flu vaccine as well. Um, so hopefully that's going to, um, increase and cause those, um, incentives to pick up. Uh, from the community initiative, um, that was awarded to the Atlanta Food Bank. And as of the end of last month, we're still waiting on the, the foundation relations manager to get all of the signatures on the agreement and get that back to the city so that we can actually distribute that hundred thousand dollars, um, to them. And with the development, um, authority, we're still showing about two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars that they've spent. They've spent all of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the city, uh, funded them. But on December the thirteenth, we did receive a wire in the amount of eight hundred and nineteen dollars, six hundred and ten dollars, excuse me, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. And that was for the, the sale of the two old national park, um, parcels. Two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six seventy-five went to the South Fulton Development Authority. Five hundred and nineteen thousand, nine thirty-five went to the city, uh, per the resolution twenty-nineteen dash zero five seven. And then also there was a request to get an update on the Open Gov. As of today, we have those numbers updated on the city's website. We have one more section, which is the transaction report with the, um, Open Gov representative working on that. And that should be up and everything will be updated by tomorrow to show fiscal year twenty-two numbers. And that's the end of my March report. Any questions?
I'm in the queue.
Thank you, Councilwoman Willis.
Okay, you said that we collected an overage of revenue. I think it was on slide. What slide did you talk about there was an overage of revenue that we collected?
Uh, was it property tax, slide four, for the year-to-date tax revenues? One point one million.
Okay, property tax. It was on slide four, you said, okay.
Yes, four. It's, that'll be the year-to-date tax revenue. Go.
Thirty thousand?
Go, go up. Right, go, go down one more.
Go down one more, okay.
Was it this slide? Yeah, because this is a slide where I say we've collected one million, one eighty-four, seven oh three, because they billed out thirty million and we've collected like thirty-one million as of March.
Okay, and that is because of the increase in property values more than likely?
Right.
Okay, and when did we receive that five hundred thousand dollars from the South Fulton Development Authority?
That came in, in December the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Dr. Rowe.
Uh, yes, on page two of your presentation, I know between the budgeted revenue and the actual under business license, it's significantly, uh, below projections. Can you speak to that? We had budgeted two point five million and we're at nine hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and three dollars.
Okay, so that was on the slide two, I believe it was. I think we can go up one more. Okay, all right, so this is where you're talking about here, with the business license. Uh, yes, I need to look into that. I do know that staff, we have a revenue manager on board now. And so that revenue manager is responsible for assisting with the business license. So they have actually gotten with code enforcement and tried to figure out how to collect on some of the business license that are actually delinquent, especially on the Fulton Industrial Boulevard. So that's the task that they're full speed ahead on right now, to try to get that collection up.
Okay, um, and are, in those assessments, I know some of them may have been impacted during COVID. Did we see, um, a drop-off, say, compared to last year? I know, you know, we may not have had everybody renewing, um, as we came out of the pandemic, you know, the hardest part of the pandemic.
I can take a look at that number and see if we had some that actually say closed their doors.
Right.
Compared to being open prior to the pandemic. I'll get that number for you and send it out.
Yeah. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gums.
Uh, hi, Ms. Slaton Dixon, thank you for, can you hear me?
Not, not good.
How about now, okay. So, uh, thank you for your report. I'm looking at, I believe it is slide ten maybe, the confiscated assets. So the thirteen thousand is what the state has sent us, um, for, I guess, the process of what we confiscated in previous drugs and search and seizures. Is there a running list of, I guess, these, the amount of money that the state will send us every month? Or we just kind of plan a wait-and-see amount?
From, from my past history, it's pretty much waiting until those cases are dismissed, they're settled, and it's decided on that the city can actually get those funds. But I can kind of go back and see if I can figure out maybe a pattern to see whether or not it's kind of a, a set trend of when the funds come in. Because I know there were a couple of months we didn't get any money.
And right now, the state is the only source that we're getting these funds from, not anything local or federal. Do you know that, or is that a Chief Meadows question?
There might be a Chief Meadows.
Okay. And the last thing was about the, um, the twenty-six thousand. So out of that two hundred and some thousand that we have in the, I guess, in the account, twenty-six thousand of it went out to car repairs? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yes.
Or understanding?
Can you bring that slide back up, Courtney? Go down to the next to the last confiscated. Go up, right there. Yes, it would actually be small tools and equipments. So they've actually purchased something. I'm not exactly sure what that twenty-six thousand dollars was for, but I can find out that and let you know too.
Okay, if you can. I don't know if anyone's front of police departments here that can answer that, but that would be a question I would want to know. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Councilwoman Willis.
I'm sorry, the acoustics and the sound is horrible in this, uh, facility, uh, and it's hot. But, uh, I, I did not hear your response, uh, for your reasoning for the fall off of the licenses and permitting. We budgeted, uh, three million and we have year-to-date collected only seventy-one percent, two million. What was your, I know, um, that was a question that Councilmember Rau asked. I didn't hear, can you?
Okay, all right. I said that, that, I will check into that, just to make sure that, say, businesses that were in business prior to the pandemic hadn't actually closed their doors.
Okay.
Just to see what the drop-off was.
Okay.
All right.
All right, and do we have a lot, I guess this would be a, yeah, this probably would be, this is your shot. Do you know how many outstanding, uh, do we still have a backlog in the permit?
And that's actually community development permitting.
Okay.
Yeah, as far as I know, the last report she gave, she said they were pretty caught up, but I'll let them speak directly.
Okay, so this is only concerning business license, correct? Okay, thank you. And there was never a backlog with business license?
Only from the standpoint of the permitting, because some of the business license couldn't be issued until the permits were issued.
Okay, because I know I'm still getting a few calls about it, so, okay.
I'll double check into that.
All right, thank you so much.
Councilwoman Reeves.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Slaton. Uh, for clarity, you said that the sale from the property, from the Development Authority, that money was wired in December?
Yes.
That mean that deal would have closed in December?
Yes, it was on December the thirteenth, we received those funds.
Okay, because we received that, that deal closed in March, so I was confused on that. Thank you.
Hi, uh, I've got a few quick questions. Some of them are about, uh, public works expenditures. So I'm just going to save that for the Jacobs portion, I'd ask you to stick around for that. I did not see an actual slide for the DA or DDA report.
Okay, yeah, and I didn't put a slide in. I'll make sure to add that. I just put that on my notes to give an update, but I'll add a slide to it.
Okay, and I, and I didn't, did, did you give numbers? I heard numbers for the DA, I didn't hear numbers for the DDA.
No, I didn't give any numbers for the DDA. I just only did it for the South Fulton Development Authority. So I will get that for the DDA for you. I don't have that here tonight.
It's fine, it's our first time, we're, we're going to be doing this every month, so, um, thank you so much.
All right.
Mr. Clerk, please, uh, sound the next item.
Yes, the next item is number two under monthly reports. City Manager Monthly Report will be provided by Tammy Sally Jones, City Manager.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, the first thing I wanted to announce, um, to the public was that, um, at our last, uh, council meeting, the council voted to take recess from our meetings for the month of June and July. Uh, therefore, we won't have any, uh, scheduled work sessions, zoning meetings, or regular council meetings until August, unless we need to have, um, special called meetings. So I want to make sure that the public is aware of that. Um, as you are aware, the city, we celebrated our fifth birthday on May the first. Our communications department partnered with Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs to plan and host two events for our birthday celebration. Um, the first one was a panel event focusing on the reasons why the city was founded. And then we also had a family fun day. Um, I do want to say thank you to our staff, thank you to the mayor, thank you to the council members for your support for that particular event. Although we didn't have the turnout that we had expected, we do hope that, uh, you will, uh, come out and celebrate with us when we have our Juneteenth celebration. And I want to also, um, let you know that date for the Juneteenth event is scheduled for June the eighteenth. Uh, that's Saturday, June the eighteenth, from one to ten PM at Wolf Creek Amphitheater. Um, the program that's being, uh, planned and executed, we have contracted with a events planner, um, uh, Ricket Roads Event Management. Um, so we're going to have various vendors, uh, we're soliciting vendors. If you're selling things and you want to participate in this particular event, we encourage you to get in touch with our event planner. We're going to have various, uh, uh, live entertainment, food trucks, face paintings, drummers, games for the kids. It's going to be a great event, so we would encourage you to please come out and support us for our Juneteenth event. Again, that's going to be Saturday, June the eighteenth, from one to ten PM. Um, for those of you who are looking to do some, I guess, spring or now summer cleaning, uh, we're going to be having our spring cleanup event, and that's going to be Saturday, May twenty-first, from eight AM to two PM. Uh, we're going to have two locations, uh, thirty-seventy Merck Road and also twenty-seven seventy-five Creel Park. Again, that's thirty-seventy Merck Road, twenty-seven seventy-five Creel Park. Uh, there will be paper shredding, uh, that's only going to be available over at Merck Road. We will have, uh, curb side pickup for our seniors, uh, and those who are, uh, handing, uh, disabled, pardon me, uh, those who are sixty-five and older. We would encourage you to pre-register. You have to call, uh, phone number is four seven zero five five two four three one one. Again, that's four seven zero five five two four three one one. That's for our seniors. If you need some assistance, uh, we're going to be providing that. And we would encourage you to please, uh, refer to our city website, wwwcityofsouthfultonga.gov, uh, for more information about items that can and cannot be accepted. Um, CDBG, I wanted to talk about that, the Community Development Block Grant Program. Fulton County and the city of South Fulton, we kicked off a meeting on May the ninth regarding Burdette, this particular location, the HVAC, we know is hot today. Uh, we're going to be, um, having the AC installed. And Fulton County has approved two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we, uh, have a contractor that's going to be, uh, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And that particular, uh, agreement is going to be on the May twenty-fifth, uh, city council agenda. Uh, rental and mortgage assistance program, I know I've gotten some questions about that. Uh, we've identified a previous vendor that has helped us with that. Uh, that's going to be out of our American Rescue Plan funding. Uh, the city of South Fulton, we received or expected to receive eleven point six million. We're actually still waiting for our, um, second installment to arrive. Uh, but, uh, this particular item is going to be on the agenda for the twenty-fifth for the mayor, uh, the council, pardon me, to take action. Um, our public safety, uh, grant from the state, it's a thousand dollars that Governor Kemp approved for our public safety employees. Um, we, uh, after kind of going back and forth and submitting some documents to the state, uh, it's my understanding from our finance team, we finally have all the information that the state has requested. And so we expect to receive, uh, that funding by June, and that will be a thousand dollars that will go to our police and fire personnel. And then, uh, code enforcement wanted me to make you aware that, uh, we're trying to get back out and, uh, remind our businesses about, uh, our single-use plastic, um, campaign. We, we started that, I believe, on last year. And we want to raise awareness again and encourage, um, our businesses, uh, to, um, comply with the ordinance regarding single-use plastic. And then our CDRA program, we, the question came up about our permits, and we've been doing our very best to try to, um, look at any backlogs, look at any, uh, programs or processes or procedures that we need to improve upon, to streamline our process. We're not there yet, we hope to be getting there. Um, so, uh, Ms. Kiefer and her team are going to be meeting, uh, to go over those processes. And I do want to make the council aware, uh, that our new Economic Development Director, Mr. Artie Jones, will be starting us next, starting with us next week, um, on May the eighteenth. So we're happy to have him join us. So I did present, uh, this information to you previously via email. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to accept those at this, at this time. Thank you.
Councilwoman Willis, your hand up.
Thank you for your, um, information or report, Ms. Sally Jones. Ms. Sally Jones, when this city council put forth policy, is, is very important that, um, our policies are effectuated. And there are three policies that we put forth that have yet to be effectuated. Number one is the human sex trafficking signage. I have gone to numerous businesses, including our own city facilities, and they don't have the signage, um, hung in the facilities or businesses throughout the city of South Fulton with the hotline information. And, um, it is a, um, city ordinance that this is done. Number two, under Parks and Recreation, there was a resolution put forth that a jamboree is done. Uh, and that jamboree, we are to charge an entry-free, uh, entry fee, and it was to highlight our sports programs for football. And that money was supposed to go to assisting, um, individuals who did not have, who had hardship paying for their kids to participate in our youth football sports program. That is, uh, city ordinance, I mean, a city resolution that was passed. And then we also had, uh, a resolution where a day of prayer, uh, was supposed to be done. And that was a resolution put forth by Councilwoman McGums and I. We initiated the initiate, the initial one, um, but there was supposed to be one done on an annual basis that has yet to be effectuated. And so my hope and desire is these next two months, this council has said, hopefully you and your staff will go through resolutions and ordinances and, um, effectuate policies that have been set forth by the city council.
Thank you for making me aware of those.
All right, Councilwoman Gums.
Thank you for your report. Um, I actually read it pretty early, but I just had one quick question that came to mind. Is there a possible way that you could have, I guess, communications lists on the website about the rental and mortgage assistance is coming? I know a lot of the residents are anticipating that, but if there's a way that we can just have a little blurb on it, uh, on the website, um, saying that. And then my last question, I did say, um, only one. The number of vacancies that we have in this city, do we have, um, estimate of the number of vacancies that we currently have in the city?
I don't have that with me now, but I can email that out to the council. I know our HR staff is here, but we can get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Willis.
We did get information that within the last year, we had over a hundred and seventeen employees to leave. So do you know of those hundred and seventeen employees that have left the city, how many of those positions were backfilled?
I don't know that right now, but I'll get that to you.
Hi, thank you, uh, Madam City Manager. I, I just had two questions. One, um, what was the total amount that we spent on the city anniversary?
Mr. Landrum, do you know? Okay, all right. Mayor, we can, we can get that to you. I know that there was a budgeted amount, but I can provide that to you.
Okay, and then, um, I had asked at the last report, and it's fine if you don't have an answer yet, but the, the, uh, transportation alternative projects, did you find out anything about that?
I haven't yet, but we, we will get that to you.
All right, I'm going to ask Jacobs too, they may know.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Clerk, sound the next item.
Next item is under monthly reports, it's City Attorney Monthly Report, Vincent Hyman, City Attorney.
Mayor and Council, I've already provided that in a form of memo.
All right, seeing no questions, none in the queue, we are right on time. We're going to go to our first presentation, sound the next item. Next item under presentations is number four, presentation by the South Fulton Convention and Visitors Bureau, Y. Diane Matthews, President. Presentation by the South Fulton Convention and Visitors Bureau, Why Diane Matthews, President?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and everyone in here. It's my pleasure to represent the South Fulton Convention and Visitors Bureau and to bring to you our greetings and also our recommendations for amendments to our bylaws. Again, I'm Diane Matthews, President of the CVB Board, and I'm joined here by some of our board members, if you guys would stand, as well as our Executive Director, if you all would stand, just so they can see who we are. Okay? Thank you for joining us. We've had a little bit of change when 2022 came in, but we have been able to really deal with it very effectively with the help of Mayor and Council, and we cannot thank you enough for that. We had some changes over who was running the CVB and that kind of thing. And so, now, moving forward, we see that there is a need for some amendments to the bylaws for the CVB. And one of those is, and I wanted to start off with that, is that it's bothered us that we're the South Fulton CVB. And all of us know that South Fulton, when you refer to that, is, if you just say "South Fulton," you're talking about South Fulton County. If you're talking about the City of South Fulton, that's a different thing, the City of South Fulton. So, one of the amendments that we would like to propose is changing the name to the City of South Fulton Convention and Visitors Bureau, Inc., because that's really who we represent. We represent the city. We don't represent any other cities in South Fulton County. So, that's number one, and that one is found in the resolution. Okay? And then, going from there, under Article, I think it's under Article 2, Section 5, we had our Board Attorney go through all of this, and he reviewed it with Don Toms, the Deputy City Manager. And this is what we propose under powers. The Board of Directors shall be responsible for establishing operating policies for the CVB for evaluating the progress of the CVB and the attainment of its goals. The Board of Directors shall have full and complete power to transact all business and manage the affairs of the CVB, to hire and fire individuals engaged by the Board to assist the CVB in its operations, to elect officers to authorize the sale, conveyance, transfer, assignment, trade, exchange, lease, mortgage, otherwise encumbered or pledge any properties real or personal. One of the main things found in there is that when our tourism manager, a few months ago, was let go without the knowledge of this Board, no knowledge, tourism manager doing a great job, we never had any problem with her, but the person that was managing our CVB decided to terminate her. I feel without cause, because when we asked, when our Board asked in a Board meeting, "Why did you let her go? Was it her performance?" And we got the response, and all of us here heard it, "No, I had no problem with her performance." Well, what was it, was asked next. He didn't answer. So, one of the Board members said, "Was it personal?" And he didn't answer. So, the Board member said, and it's on record, "Well, evidently, it was personal." So, we have spent all this time working hard to get our then-tourism manager, now Executive Director, back to run this CVB and to keep us from losing any more momentum in promoting the City of South Fulton and its tourism. That is what is most important. It's not about one person's ego or anything like that. It's about promoting the city. And so, that is the major reason for that change. Almost everything else in here remains the same as it was, with the exception of a quorum would, a quorum for our meetings would mean more than 50%. So, it could be as low as 50% plus one. That's the only other change that our attorney felt that he needed to make. Everything else is the way that it was originally, originally stated. The main thing, and I'll close with that, is the fact that our Board, we're very committed. Yes, we are volunteers from the community, but we're very tied into the goal of promoting the city. We're a new city, and we do have some tourism, and we're building, we will have more. But for now, the tourism sites that we have have to be promoted. So, with that, I'm gonna end with the video. Mr. Adams, if you would run that for me, and I think this video will sum up what we have done over the past year.
Palm County resident Justin Jones and his three-year-old spent lots of time here at Boat Rock Preserve in South Fulton. It's what climbers call a boulder field, a place to scale short but challenging rocks with no ropes or harnesses.
Now, these are really interesting geological features. You don't see really hard granite like this almost anywhere else in the southeast.
And it's thanks to climbers like Jones that this place even exists anymore. Back in the 1990s, developers were demolishing the boulders and building nearby neighborhoods. So, a group of climbers formed the Southeastern Climbers Coalition in an effort to buy the land.
We purchased the Boat Rock Preserve in early 2000s, and we own and maintain this climbing area as well as six other climbing areas throughout Tennessee, Georgia, and Alabama.
For the City of South Fulton's relatively new tourism department, Boat Rock is a true gem and a place for more than just climbers.
And you can also come out here and just enjoy yourself on a beautiful day like today. They've got trails, you can walk, you can hike, you can just have a nice picnic out with your family.
And speaking of family, it's clear that Justin Jones gets more than just exercise out of these boulders, using the granite as a foundation on which to build those precious father-daughter memories.
Hey, SoFoo, we're at the re-grand opening of the South Fulton Tennis Center. We've got Coach Sam here with us and some of his players, some of the youngest players he's got. He's got an actual tournament happening here today, a Level 7 tournament.
So glad that the courts are finally open to the public, so come out and join us. Check us out on Facebook and on Instagram and Twitter, and we're glad to have you. Back to the...
Thank you so much for your time. I hope that this video capsule shows you how much we can do when we work together. Our Board of Directors truly understands that we can do so much more as an independent entity that is utilizing the CV funds the way they're supposed to be, which means to promote the City of South Fulton. And that's what we've done in the past year in spite of obstacles, and we have even greater plans for the year to come. And I'm here for any questions.
Councilwoman Willis?
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. I am proud to say this is, that was, this is my legislation. And for the education of residents, there are 538 cities in the State of Georgia. There are thousands of township cities throughout the nation. CVBs are prevalent. And when this legislation came to mind, I did work with the former Economic Development Director to bring it to mind, and putting it together, didn't know how quite, how it would be, how it would work or be successfully effectuated in the City of South Fulton, but I know it was needed, because we needed our city highlighted in the positive light. And I wanna thank the current CVB Board for doing such a great job highlighting our city in such a high regard. And I was just, it just made my heart flutter to see this video, and I would hope that you would send this, and it's on the city website, but you would send it to every Councilmember so that we could put it in our newsletter. I have no issues with the recommended changes you wanna make. I really do think that you should have that authority to do the things that you think is in the best interest of your Board. I do have one question that you, I don't think you mentioned, and that is, going forward, will Council be able to appoint members? Not that we have any issues with the current members, 'cause I don't. I'm not looking to make any changes, 'cause if it's not broke, I don't believe in fixing it. But as time go on, will Council be able to make appointments to the CVB Board and also confirm the appointments? I didn't hear you mention that.
We did not change that in the bylaws. As long as Council, in the bylaws, it breaks it down into what industries should sit on the CVB Board representing tourism. And so, it's broken down into how many would come from, let's say, retail and restaurants, how many from entertainment, how many from hotel, like that. So, that's all that we asked for. You know, we're following the bylaws, so therefore, our attorney and our Board didn't see a need for a change. We do understand that the Council needs to make the appointments. We're just asking that the appointments are sticking to tourism.
Right. But I think the way that the board was for it this time, the economic development, former Economic Development Director made unilateral appointments. No one on Council got to make those appointments. I'm okay, yeah, I'm okay with the type of background that is needed to be on this Board. I think that's necessary, but I just wanna make sure you have in the bylaws that we make the appointments, and they're not unilaterally made by the Economic Development Director.
Right. It's definitely outlined in the bylaws.
Okay, thank you.
So, that part has not changed, and it's also still in the bylaws that we would, we would report to the City Council on whatever basis you choose. I think it says in here, "Annual", but we can report based on how often the Council would need a report from us, so yes.
And just for the education of the public, what was also the legislation that was sponsored by me was the Hotel Motel Tax. So, the funding is for this Board is coming from the Hotel Motel Tax.
That is correct.
Do you have any idea how much, and that was probably in the financials, was generated?
We have definitely seen an increase in our revenue, so for the month of April, our tax city dollars were around $20,000.
Okay. And then, we only have one hotel, so we are in the process, yes, I know she... We're in the process of bringing two more hotels online, correct? The city is in, well, the company Marriott is in the process of bringing two more?
I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. My name is Anka Thompson. I'm the General Manager of the Fairfield Inn and Suites, and currently, there's two more hotels that are about to break around very soon, pending the permits that are, I guess, about to be approved. So, we're gonna have another hotel, Home2 Suites, which is an extended state product by Hilton, and another extended state product, which is Townplay Suites by Marriott as well. So, three hotels.
And the only thing that we would ask, I would ask, and I know my colleagues sharing these sentiments, when y'all have these groundbreaking, if the CVB Board knows about them or the Chamber knows about them, could you please make sure that you're communicating with the City Manager, our clerk, to make sure that we get timely enough notice to be present? Because a lot of times, groundbreakings happen in the city, and we're not notified, and our schedules are not taken into consideration.
Of course. I will make sure that City Council is definitely informed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, and good job.
Thank you so much. I have some questions.
All right, we have more questions. Don't go anywhere, Ms. Matthews or Ms. Thompson.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Just wanna thank Diane and her group for their presentation. I did have a couple of questions, and I think Councilwoman Willis may have alluded to some of them. It's really about the funding, the funding of the CVB? How is the structure for the Hotel Motel Tax setup to fund the CVB? 'Cause right now, it's being funded from that source. Is that gonna be the only source, and how much of that money will go to the CVB versus some coming to the city's coffers?
I can answer the question, or she wanted to say something? I don't know if the microphones work. As far as we're concerned, we're charging the city tax. Our breakdown, okay, I guess I have to be right in front of it. Our breakdown is 15.75%. So, our guests pay 15.75% plus the $5 Hotel Motel Fee. So, it rough, it ranges about 20-some percent when you all, you know, do your percentages. So, for the city tax, we're actually charging 8%. And my understanding is that all 8% is going directly to the CVB. However, the last time we received any funding was in February, so I know the city is behind on sending those payments to the CVB organization.
Well, the reason, the reason why I asked that question is because if 100, if 100% of the Hotel Motel Tax today is going towards the CVB, I just wanna make sure that we're in a position, when we do have our 20 to 30 hotels, at least some of those come over to the city. Okay? So, I... So I think it's something, it's a work in progress, I know this, so I'm not worried about it. I was just wanted that to become clear, if all of the current funds from the single hotel that is going towards the city are not. Thank you for presenting the structure of the appointments and how the board is going to be set up, Diane, or is set up. Wasn't quite clear to me whether you have all 12 members currently. So can you confirm you have all 12 members currently, and if you don't, do not?
Currently, we have 11 members.
You have 11 members?
Yes.
So you're sure, and do you have plans for getting the 12th member, and how should that be done?
We would be getting with council on that, because, you know, we, well, let me just say this. When the board was formed, we were contacted by the city to serve. It was our understanding that we were representing council people and the mayor for the board. We didn't find out until this year that that wasn't the case, and it was someone else that made the decision. We're trying to follow the bylaws and the resolution, and it says in here that the board is comprised of appointees of the council and the mayor. So that is what we're sticking to. As I said, we didn't change, we didn't make a proposal to change that portion of the bylaws at all.
Okay, thank you, because obviously, as was stated, they were all unilaterally done by one person. So I did not remember on my list, once I got elected, an opportunity to appoint someone to the CVB, and I really found out afterwards how the appointments were made. So I just wanted to know if all of this was fulfilled. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Councilman Reeves?
Yes, mine is just a comment. Assistant Matthews is, I appreciate what you're doing, and thank you for going out and recruiting and getting experienced executive director to put this city in a positive light.
Thank you so much. I think it was...
You done, Councilman Reeves?
I thought I saw another. Yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Willis?
Yes, I just want to, for the education of Councilmember Sebastian and the public, is our CFO here, Ms. Dixon, can you come up, please? The hotel motel tax are restricted funds, meaning that there are specific purposes that you can use these funds for. Hotel motel tax used for trade and tourism and public art are allowable uses. Could you please expound and confirm? So that's why you have the hotel motel tax going directly to this board, because according to state law, they're restricted funds, and this is the main allowable use that is used for. A lot of other cities, they have what you call, what do you call it, the DMO? So I think College Park, East Point, and Hayville, they're in a DMO. And what's the acronym for the DMO, Ms.?
Stands for Destination Marketing Organization. Destination Marketing Organization, and Union City is also included.
Yeah, they have a DMO. So they don't have CVB Boards, they have a DMO, and that's where all their hotel motel tax go to, to help market their city. The city of South Fulton decided not to form a DMO and join in with other cities. We went in this direction because of our size and because of our capability to do what they're doing, which is great work, we decided to do a CVB Board. And the hotel motel tax is an allowable use. Ms., did I explain that correctly?
That is, that is correct. It is restricted, and it's supposed to be for tourism within the city, within the city.
And some of the money at East Point is used to do their Wednesday wine down for their Thank you.
Dr. Rowe?
Yes, thank you. I think also, we have some money set aside for public art out of our money, so it's not, it's my understanding, it's not 100% that goes to this. So I just want to make sure everybody looks at that, but the majority of it does go to that. I have a question, and I guess this may be more of a city attorney, city manager. I know we have a number of independent bodies like this. I would have, I would like you all to look at all of those entities and how they report back to council on a periodic basis, whether that's in written or by coming before this board and providing briefings on what's going on with those activities for the benefit of the public as well as the council. I think that's very important. And I know as not directly related, can you also look at, I know a number of those entities tend to have IGAs between the entities and the city council that spell out their relationship so everything is understood. I would ask that you look at that. I know we've done it for the Downtown Development Authority and the South Fulton Development Authority. So I think it's important that we look at all those autonomous boards in that way. So, thank you.
And on the subject of the Downtown Development Authority, I did talk to Ms. Joyce Scales, and she told me I should have that signed IGA from them within the next two weeks.
Wonderful. Yeah, but if you reported, I guess, once we come back from our summer break, on all of these entities, it would be helpful, and how they'll come and report back to this body. Thank you.
Wait, I have a few quick questions. First, I was looking through, I was looking through the legislation, and I saw that I think the board terms go from two years to one year? Is that, is that not correct?
No. It's a four-year, four years, but we, the board members serve for four years. The officers are elected every year, one year.
And then the, the change that you did talk about having the board, well, let me just back up. I want to understand, this is an independent body from the city of South Fulton, right?
Yes.
So you all have your own lawyers and your own attorneys?
Yeah, no, even when we were like a department under the city, we had our own board attorney, because that's what you do. So when these issues came up, we're happy that we had him. So we have our own accountant, we have our own board attorney to take care of matters as they come up like that. The reason that we made that amendment under, I think it's Section 5, is based on what we went through. We learned the hard way that it's quite possible, if you put a tourism board, a Convention and Visitors Bureau board that does tourism, and has it managed by a department that could look at us as competition, because we're bringing in business too, and we're promoting the city and bringing in business, that is, that can be perceived as a conflict, and for us, it was a conflict. So we're trying to get rid of all conflicts like that and just focus on promoting the city.
Okay. So to be clear, you all, I guess, under this proposed legislation, you would no longer be under the city's Economic Development Director?
That is correct.
You would be your own?
That is correct. We would manage the CVB as the board would manage the CVB. And we would hire our own executive director, and later, when enough funds are available, one day, a tourism manager like that as we grow.
All right. And so you said that you would, the board would, I can't remember the exact language, but something like oversee all of the operations and make all of the operational decisions?
That is correct. So that we're in the know of everything that's going on, and we make the decisions. Of course, we're still reporting to the council and the mayor. So you are aware of this and have input as well. But being under a department in the city, or a department head in the city, is where the conflict came in.
Oh, no, no. I understand completely. I don't, I don't need to have input, you all are the experts. I'm wondering, though, if you have an executive director?
Yes.
What is, if you all are overseeing the day-to-day operations, what does the executive director do?
The director, and I'd like to introduce her, for those that don't know her, Chantelle Francois, who was our tourism manager, is now our executive director.
Welcome back, Ms. Francois.
Yes. And what does she do? I'll let her tell you, because she does it all.
Thank you, Diane. Good afternoon, everyone. As the executive director for the CVB, I will oversee the daily operations of the tourism products for the city and activities for tourism within the city of South Fulton, in the promotions, and also leisure and business travel attractions to the city, and managing the budget and staffing and any of the operations within the CVB.
All right. And the, speaking of budget, I'm sorry, you're, all of you are saying things that make me want to, that bring up other things. But the, we are getting finance reports now from the DA and the DDA, and I guess they're going through our finance director. So can you, can we have them be a part of that schedule of the monthly reporting?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yes, we have an accountant, so she should be able to produce that.
All right. And Councilwoman Willis talked about DMOs, and so you all are not a direct marketing organization?
Well, a destination marketing organization and a CVB, which CVB is Convention and Visitors Bureau, really is interchangeable in a way, but a DMO is an actual standalone organization. A CVB can be a standalone as well as being requested. So basically, the organization being called a DMO in the industry, it, like I said, could be interchangeable.
Okay. So what is the, what is the, like, the tax classification? Like, what are you all classified as?
Well, we should be 501(c)(6), a nonprofit.
Okay. You say you should be. What are you now?
We are. I don't...
To our knowledge, we are. We can look it up, but under our former management, we were told that the 501(c)(6) went through. That was last year.
Okay. The website and the social media, do you all have control of that? I know that there were. Okay, go ahead.
Can I speak on this? Because what we're running into, and this has been the problem after this whole stuff, everything started happening in January, and when we realized that there was one person with his personal name tied to the entity. So now we're running into all these issues because the CVB is tied to a person's name. So the website that we spent $30,000 on, we have no access, and it's not being tracked or followed on Google or any kind of major search engines. All of the social media websites are under his name, and we're not even allowed to make changes or even put an admin to do regular posting. So we're running into this, like, our organization being tied to a personal name. So in order for us to make that separation, it's really causing so much headache and stress, and we're not really able to do what we're, you know, wanting to do and accomplish. And as a result, you know, our hotel is the revenue generator for this organization. So we've seen, you know, the past six months almost, a complete stagnation in our marketing efforts, and it's like all this money is being pulled somewhere, but nobody's able to do anything, or being completely misspent on publications and advertising that have nothing to do with tourism, as it was done the previous years. And so now, we're really trying to pull out all those resources and redirect them to the channels that make the most sense for our hotel for tourism and for us to promote the city. So I think, and obviously, it's a suggestion here, but we might need to reestablish a new entity that's not tied to the previous executive director's name, and we might need to form a new entity.
Right. Because, well, if that were to happen, like, let's say that we did do that, or, you know, we have the city of South Fulton CVB, and the South Fulton CVB is still out there.
Okay. Our accountant is working very closely to change all of this. We've already started with the Secretary of State's office for our Articles of Incorporation and making that change. His name has been removed finally, as of last week. It is not on there as the organizer or anything, or as an executive with this organization. However, you make a very valid point, which is the reason why we don't have to do all of that, because if you all approve us changing the name, we are then the city of South Fulton CVB, and we can, what is the right word, dis, not dismantle?
Dissolve?
Dissolve, dissolve, and that's here also in our bylaws. We can dissolve South Fulton Convention and Visitors Bureau, Inc., because we are establishing, hopefully, the city of South Fulton Convention and Visitors Bureau, Inc. It's a different name, it has to be registered all over again. And to Anka's other point is the fact that we cannot access our social media. We're locked out. We cannot, or what else is it? Oh, we are, we're just learning now, as far as invoices are concerned, for publications, our job is to promote through publications. We were unaware of anybody's invoice telling us when it's going to be due, when it's going to end, because the majority of the publications are non-tourism related. They're Georgia Trend and Lifestyle Magazine. We may love those publications, but they're not tourism related. So with, with the help of our executive director and our board, who is very knowledgeable about this, and we want this to stop, we will not be renewing non-tourist-related publications anymore. It was a waste of money, and those funds are mandated to be spent by the state on tourism. So, that's it.
So with that, and this, and this may not be a question that we can answer today, or maybe our lawyers need to talk with your lawyers, but we're dissolving, we may dissolve an organization, reconstitute a new organization, which would require like Articles of Incorporation and all those things, but then I'm also thinking about how we close out the books on that organization, because that organization on paper is tied to our city.
Correct.
And so, you know, we are respons, we gave that organization money. I'm assuming that we, in some part, as well as you all in some part, would be responsible for accounting for all of that money and zeroing everything out before we went over to a new organization. I do want to just ask you this, this one last question. You are, or Ms. Francois is the executive director. Mr. Pike was the CEO or whatever?
He was the executive director as well as Economic Development.
As well as, okay, so who will be the CEO or the chair now?
I'm the president. I am the president of the CVB. Frederica Jones of Centtown Pub is the secretary. Where's Solandia, is she here?
Yeah, I saw Ms. Savini just come in, yes.
Solandia Abini is the vice president, and Quentin Evans is the treasurer.
Okay. Now, and so I've got to ask this last thing, because we were talking about conflicts of interest. So you're also the chair of the South Fulton Chamber?
I am the chair.
That's for all eight cities?
And, correct. And in this resolution, in this, in these bylaws, there is a seat for the South Fulton Chamber of Commerce. We represent individually each city. There was a time that all cities didn't belong to the South Fulton Chamber, so we wouldn't represent them. But currently, now the Palmetto has rejoined, we represent all eight cities throughout South Fulton County. There is no conflict. We work with all of the cities based on whatever their needs are. This is the first time that the chamber has sat on a board for the city, for a particular city. But I was asked to do that because it's in the bylaws.
How does that, so let's say we are competing with East Point to attract, I don't know, a hotel or something. Like, how does, how does that work between the chamber and the CVB?
The chamber is not, its hands are not tied about what they do for a particular city. Each city is a member of the chamber, just like any individual in here could be members of the chamber. Our job is to support that member, so that member business, be it that city, be it the state, be it the school board, be it Joe's Rib Shack, or whatever it is, we support them. There is no... There is no conflict in that, right?
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Gomes.
So that was quite a bit to digest. And I'm a little perplexed, so please forgive me. With this conversation that you all just shared in regards to not being able to transition, have you had a meeting with the city manager or with any other? So
We have.
There has not been any resolution to possibly locate these passwords or any of the staff? There is nothing that is available to help you all move forward?
We have not, we have requested it. We work pretty closely with the deputy city manager, Don Toms. And he knows that we, we have asked for this, and he is looking into it. But we have not received the passwords. We, we feel that all these are within a computer and that they should be easy to pull. But we have not received any of it, no.
So city manager, with Mr. Strickland being able to, I guess, wipe our computers, is he not able to do that to locate that information?
We will ask him if he can retrieve that for us. And as soon as we're able to get it, we will definitely get it to you, but.
Sure, with Mr. Strickland being able to, I guess, wipe our computer.
Out to our IT staff to see if they can get that information back from us. And I'll, I'll follow up with you offline too then, to get some additional information.
That would be great, and we also need the invoices. We just need to know who all we have invoices for. One, so that we can pay them timely. And two, as they, if they're non-tourist-related, we need to be able to end the contract when it expires.
Well, I would assume that they would be going to his email, so why can't we pull his email? I mean, that should be a simple ask.
Yeah, his email should be saying that he no longer is employed with the city and to contact a specific person. So we'll check on that, too.
What I also wanted to bring to your attention is the fact that when Ms. Chantel was terminated, there was no exit interview. And her laptop withheld her contacts. All that information was retained by the city. So she is now having to start from scratch, try and figure out where to pull that information when that's in a computer with the city. So if we can please have your assistance in getting that information back to her, it would be greatly appreciated.
So, so thank you for that as well. I think, city manager, maybe there should be another meeting that you need to convene with this group to address their issues so they can move forward. It is pretty concerning, the statements that they're saying. At first, I had warm and fuzzy feelings, and then now it's kinda a mess. So if there is a way that we can find a path, a positive path forward for them, I would definitely appreciate it. I do thank you all for standing up here and answering these questions. But it is very concerning what you all have to go through. So I don't know, and maybe this is for you, Attorney Hyman. Is there any legal action that this independent body could take to? And, and the finances, I'm concerned about the finances.
Point of order, point of order. I would ask that we take litigation in the back.
No, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, that's, that's a litigation.
I'm asking just if that is a.
The only thing, only thing I'll say on this matter is that I would like to speak with the CBB's attorney and kind of look a little bit as to his position in the structure, how it's set up. That'll give me a better idea of what's going on.
Okay, so you all can communicate to make sure that you all are on the same page.
Absolutely.
And, and my last question, well, I guess it was about transparency and information being on the website, but you don't have access. So with the $30,000 website, it's just sitting there?
Yeah. It's just sitting there.
If you go to Google right now, if you go to Google right now and pull up CBB, you'll realize that it's not being even brought up to your search at all. CBB South Fulton is not, City of South Fulton is not coming up.
Okay, thank you for your time.
And I guess one last thing with the resolution. I hope when you all review it, it's, the, the whole purpose behind it is there is not one person who is making all the decisions that we're all completely transparent. And there's a board of directors that come together, vote on things, and then there's something that happens. Because we don't want to have one person that's pulling all the shots. Thank you.
Hey, we, we've got a couple more questions. Some people are going on there third time, so we're gonna end it after these four. I have William Sebastian Willis and Raul. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes. Yes, thank you. I just, I wanted to circle back. Councilwoman Gums touched on this, but I wanted to circle back to be sure I understood what I think I heard, which was there's money that's been spent, but perhaps not properly accounted for and not really sure. Relate, I mean, with the website and the invoices and all of.
The website was operational until the person that was over the CBB left. And before he left, he had fired the tourism manager. So that is what left us out of the loop. And nothing has been managed because none of us have any passwords or access to any of that. So the money was spent, and it was being used properly. The problem is when that person left because they had full 100% control and did not share with the board, we don't have access. So that's what we're trying to get right now.
Okay, but the, the money itself was spent correctly?
Yeah, to purchase the website. It was, it was spent correctly. It's just that you can't have the website there with no one able to access it and update it properly. And then the same thing with social media. We invested in that with our social media person, who can't access social media for us anymore because we have to have the passwords.
All right, Councilwoman Sebastian. I'm sorry, were you done, Councilwoman Willis? Will, Williams, Councilwoman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the question I was gonna ask was about the spending of funds that didn't seem consistent, given the definition of the use of those funds according to CBB guidelines by the state. It, it's, it's obvious that it seemed as if that happened. So I'm not gonna, I'm not blaming anyone here or anything, but I'm just, I just wanna make the point that this is why oversight is needed.
Yes.
And any one of our boards, any one of our authorities need oversight. We are a government entity. We're not a private organization, right? We are accountable to the public, and we are accountable to ourselves. So, again, I wanna thank you guys for what you have laid out. And I'm looking forward to how you guys are gonna work under this new structure. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Willis.
So, first of all, the way that we are currently set up, the, the former executive director was a department head that reported up to the city manager. So the oversight should have come from the city manager, the way we're currently set up. The way that they are trying to set up is they are trying to put accountability. They are trying to put checks and balances in place. And they are trying to make sure whatever is spent out of the organization is voted on and not dictated by one individual. If someone left this organization with information and property that belongs to the city, let me choose. Was the exiting process done correctly? Because in most organizations, you have to turn over property and information to the city before you leave. So my question is, was that followed through? If this organization spent $30,000 for a website and also spent money for a social media platform, and they don't have access to it, I would defer to talk about this in the back because this may be a litigation matter. If a person left this organization and did not turn over information or property to the city. Second of all, you know, this impacts our trade in tourism. So I do agree that we do need to go through the Articles of Incorporation and, and, and apply for another name. And, but to hold them accountable for what has currently happened, we can't because the executive director made unilateral decisions and that a former executive director was a department head that reported up to the city manager. That executive director, once he left, the exit interview process and the exiting process should have been in tandem with IT, the HR process, and the city manager. So I just wanna make sure that is clear to the public. And I just wanna make sure that it's clear that we're not holding the CBB board responsible for what happened. Because what you all are trying to do is correct this from ever happening again. Thank you.
Adding to that, Councilwoman Willis and Gums, I know you had a question as well and concern and for everyone here. Just so you know that the executive director in the previous role actually had no experience in tourism and in managing CVBs. And I just wanna assure you that I do have 20 years' experience in doing this nationally, internationally, and have set up and ran CVBs over the years. So we would not have this issue going forward. And had we had that in place, we would not have had this issue. So just, you know, rest assured that the CBB is in capable hands and that we do understand what that is, what the role is, what the responsibilities are. And we will want to go forward doing that correctly.
Thank you.
Thank you, and last, Dr. Raul.
City manager, I've heard a lot, and I'll give you a chance to respond. Sounds like a lot of assumptions going on here, I'm just saying. But at the end of the day, I would like the lawyer who represents the city to look at these documents and make sure that everybody is being held accountable because these are public funds. And so I'm probably more nervous than I started this conversation about how autonomous they should be. And so I'm just being transparent about that. And I hope that whatever you bring back in the fall makes it very clear how they interact with the city, report back, and the financial reporting. Because while we talk about that, when you're on a board, you are responsible. And you ask the hard questions, and you make sure the funds are, you know. So I hear you, Ms. Councilwoman Willis, but that's not been my experience. And I've served on many boards. So we just need to make sure everything is very, very tight. And I'm counting on you and the, the city attorney to make sure going forward we have safeguards in place.
All right, thank you for that. We're a little over time, but we got a very important discussion. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Madam City Manager, yes, please respond, I'm sorry.
Yes, well, I just wanted to make sure that the council knows that that particular employee was offered an exit interview. He chose not to do an exit interview. We received his computer. We received his laptop, all of his electronic equipment. Again, I will reach out to our IT staff to see if we can get any passwords. But I do wanna make it clear that he did all of the procedures through IT and HR that he was requested to do.
Sorry, thank you, thank you so much for that. All right, we're gonna move on. Mr. Clerk, please sound to the next item.
Next item is item five, presentation by Jacobs, City Services. Say, presentation by Mohammed Roth, project manager. Jacobs.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's an honor to be here tonight. My name is Mohammed Roth. I'm the project manager for the Jacobs team that provides certain services for the City of Ros, that provides certain services for the City of South Fulton Public Works Department, serving the citizens of South Fulton. I am actually gonna have Diana Resparas and Matt Hauser from our Jacobs team to make the presentation that's included in your packet. I'll be around for questions. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council, Madam City Manager, and I'm sorry, and Mr. Mayor, my apologies. So I don't know if you have our, our presentation. While it's getting started, I'll just go ahead. Most of the information will be there, but just to give a little background, we're here today at the request of, of the mayor to come and present directly to council. I know we've met with several of you. We've gone on trips around your district in order to identify potential issues that are in, in your, in your district and try to work through and come up with solutions. Or at least note, note which ones there are, and we begin to address them. I think some of you have seen that. Councilwoman Willis, if you could share some of that air, let me know. Just a little background here, some, because I know we have at least three new people on the, well, three people on the council who were not here when the contract was originally initiated. That would be District Four, Five, and Six. But, so back in 20, what is it, November of 2018, the city began contracting with Jacobs in order to perform the operations piece of the, of the public works contract or public work services that were needed in the city. And so, I'm sorry, I thought it was coming up. So, so since that time, we helped transition the city, the city's operations piece, public works operations piece, from the county over to the city. During that time, we began, we also agreed to bring over, at the time, you may recall, being a resident of South Fulton, I definitely remember this, that there was a lot of controversies centered around a lot of the employees who were hired for, who were employed with the county, who were losing their jobs. And in that process, Jacobs agreed with the city council and mayor to transition as many of those employees over to become Jacobs employees as possible. Because it was especially right around the holiday period. And so it ended up being a great transition because it allowed for a lot of knowledge transfer to not be lost during that time. During that time, the city saved nearly $3 million in the first year while providing services. The, initially, the county had proposed $8.5 million. Jacobs came in, had a conversation and negotiated with the previous city manager and assistant city manager, Ms. Winfield, and, and got it down to $5.75 million. Currently, the contract is scheduled to end in September, on September 30th, 2022. As part of this contract, we provide the staffing, the vehicles, the facilities, equipment, systems and processes to optimize the delivery of service. In order to do that, we do use regional resources. At one point, we brought in outside, some of from our other projects down in Florida in order to help get, especially to get us up and running initially. So we were allowed, it gives us the ability to staff up at times in order to ensure that we are meeting our SLAs. It also allows us to tap into what we did, especially in the beginning when there was no equipment. I mean, it allowed us to tap into our national vendor contracts in order to be able to get the city up and running. So our contract also includes the maintenance fund. Many of you think of the maintenance fund as kind of the quick repair fund. So like last, a couple of weeks ago, we had, in District Four, we had Herndon Road that had to be repaired, $15,000 repair. That's one of those quick repairs that comes out of the maintenance fund in order to be able to get it done. But in general, all the other repairs that we do, for the most part, come out of that fund. So it's a totally, it's a separate fund. It runs around $868,000 a year. So our monthly invoice to the city is really around just under $500,000. It's $487,000. That is for the operations and all the other, you know, the staffing facilities, vehicles, and all that kind of good stuff. And then you have another $72,000 that goes directly to the maintenance fund, which we submit every month. If you get, receive a copy of the monthly report, we, we hand over an accounting of how that money is spent every single month. So we don't have to have some of those previous conversations, unfortunately, that we are having on other things. So then the question becomes, so what does Jacobs do for the city? I think that becomes the big question because there are some things that are not within the contract. So we provide the 24/7 call center, response center. So last year, the call center answered 20, I think it was 21. So last year, the call center answered 20, I think it was 21,000 calls, and the average handle time of about, or pickup call time of about one minute. We also offer 24/7, or provide 24/7 maintenance of the, of the rights away in the cities and streets. So we do, our staff comes in as early as seven in the morning, and then we have, we do have at least one person on call to initiate any emergency situations that come up, and then we have a traffic team in the event that we have signal issues that, that take care of traffic signals or signs, because you have a minimum amount of time. If a stop sign goes down, make sure we're reporting it. It goes into CC Click Fix, or it goes to the call center. The call center calls our on-call person immediately in order to handle those type of situations. Some of the other things that kind of fall under our purview are going to be the bridges, the bridge approaches, dirt roads, sidewalks, street sweeping, and brush cutting. And then we help support the capital improvement plan by making suggestions to the public works director for things that we believe should be added to the list for your consideration for funding. We also provide traffic studies, traffic calming. We do help CDRA with development, traffic planning, as new developers try to come into the city. We also do the right-of-way and utility permitting. I think the contract originally believed that we would average about 15 permits per month. We're currently averaging about 28 at this time. We also do snow, ice, and tornado response. Earlier this year, I almost want to call it No-Mageddon, we were all geared up like DOT and everybody else on January 16th. We called in our troops at 3:00 in the morning to come in and begin de-icing and prepping the roads to make sure that public, public safety was able to traverse the roads as needed in the event of an ice emergency. Previously, we did do stormwater management. We helped secure, or did secure, the MS4 permit for the city to be able to issue land disturbance permits, and we have assisted with solid waste coordination. All right? Now, the big question is, that continues to come, is what's not included in the contract? We often get questions about state routes. Initially, when the contract was initiated, state routes were under the purview of the state. At one point, the state came to the city and indicated that because we had municipalized that the state, now the city would be responsible for state routes. And so then it just becomes a question of how do we deal with it as a city? And so that's kind of just that question that's out there. The FIB area, as you know, was just annexed as of May of last year. We did do some help, we did help, we have helped with like some of the traffic signal issues that have arise, have arose over there, and we made sure that the signage was placed so everyone knew that we were now in the city of South Fulton. But outside of that, that area remains outside of our contract. And then, like most cities, which is very common, subdivision streets inside of some divisions is not included within the contract. And it's, it's bigger than just not included in the contract, it's just in general that cities don't typically like to get involved in cutting grass in individual homeowners. So it's going to be hard for the public works department to maintain a list of addresses of cut, don't cut, cut, don't cut. You know, a lot of that comes into play. And we still see some of that on main roads that we do cut, but it's significantly less. All right, next slide, please. All right, these are our service level agreements. These service level agreements were established in the contract. Our number-one goal is to make sure that we respond to priority-one calls. They usually deal with life, life, health, and safety. So those are going to be your down stop signs that I referred to earlier, that we have, I think, two hours or three hours, I'm sorry, I can't recall the time limit, to get those back up and running. But usually, those are our number-one priorities, especially if we come in in the morning. There may be a request that may be sitting out there, and I know someone may say, hey, there's a dead animal sitting somewhere. But our number-one goal is to ensure that the priority-one calls are taken care of. We've been meeting our service levels throughout the, throughout the agreement. We've worked with the public works director, Mr. Valenzuela, in order to negotiate at times where there was some need from the city, example being once we needed, Hamilton Road needed, significantly needed to be cut. It was going to ultimately delay our ability to, to meet our SLAs for the month. We worked with him on that. We ensured that Hamilton Road was cut, edged, and weeded, and then, and then we ultimately finished our task, like it was 24, 48 hours later. We also make sure that the right-of-way mowing and litter schedule, currently at four weeks, we hope that we move to something that, especially on what we call hotspot roads, or more prevalent roads that need addressing, maybe more to a two-week schedule. And then, there's just routine maintenance. We do hundreds of routine maintenance activities every, every month. If you ever see the monthly report, I know we've shared it with a couple who've asked for it, you'll see that the list of activities that we perform, that does not sometimes include some of the special requests that come in. And then there's the, then we have what I would call more like the pro bono work that has been done. Probably one of the number-one things that we've contributed, tried to contribute to the city is the LIDAR study. So when you passed your T-SLOSS II list, that list was comprised of a study, the information that came out of the LIDAR study that we paid for in our attempt to kind of get back to the city, was generated from this LIDAR study, where basically they run through and they grade every street within the city, which allows them to grade it, and basically, council, at the recommendation of the public works director, can set a grade and say, hey, if the road is an 80, then we won't touch it. But if the road is a 65 or a 55, then that road needs to be put on the list, and then you can work on prioritizing from there. But everything is, that list is, is available, and it's broken down by council district. That was one of our requests to the folks that performed the LIDAR study. We've helped with parks, there have been requests at Welcome Mall in order to hang placement banners. We've helped remove trees over at Trammell Crow after one fell down. We assisted Mr. Landrum's team with that. Public outreach, we performed, or sent out 30,000 letters throughout in order to notify people when the change had come, the new public works, I'm sorry, the new solid waste ordinance, well, the, now, we'll call it the old solid waste ordinance. And so, and then we've helped with neighborhood cleanups, HOAs on the weekends, if people have been notified, our team goes out, we try to assist and make sure that they have adequate assistance from road coverage, some traffic, traffic maintenance, or trying to keep them safe with putting up signage and things like that, but also making sure that there's stuff that they pick up. It's, we picked, it has picked up some, so now we've kind of asked that we can have until the next business day, just for the number of requests that we had. And then just in general, in the past, we've assisted and continue to assist with the spring and fall community bulk cleanup events. All right? So I talked about earlier that the stormwater, the stormwater MS4 permit that we acquired back in January of 2021, these are just some of the highlights of what has happened since we've been here. We moved from the public work, we moved the public works facility over to Boat Rock, from the Stonewall Tale jail over to Boat Rock. We've required new equipment to make the process more efficient, and hopefully, a little bit cleaner in servicing. We talked earlier about the number of calls that were being handled, I think when the calls started back in 2019, in January of 2019, I think for that calendar year, there may have been about 11,000 calls, so you can see the number of calls has significantly increased over time, some of that due to COVID, right? And then, just in general, our team has managed, last year, over 25, basically almost 2,500 tickets, right? I'll call those public works tickets. I'm going to call Matt Hauser up to come up and speak to, there's been a question about kind of what are the additional services that Jacobs has that are available to offer to the city, and kind of speaks to some of the things that we've done in other, in other cities. Matt?
Thank you, thank you, Deanna. Again, I'm Matt Hauser with Jacobs, and I worked with Jacobs on our city startup, and I had the good fortune of meeting some of you back during those early startup days, and it's nice to be back here. Congratulations on your fifth-year anniversary, and appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. So in starting up some of the cities here in Atlanta, we've done a comprehensive startup, which includes essentially every non-emergency, non-legal function that typically occurs out of City Hall. So that could be things like the finance and administrative department, parks and recreation, communications, building permitting and inspections, the whole gamut of services that a city needs to start up and operate. Picture here on that slide is a cop, is a picture of the traffic management center that we designed, built, and now operate and maintain for the city of Johns Creek. Much as is the case here, their signal systems were outdated, we worked to put in high-capacity fiber along the highway corridors, connect all 79 traffic signals together, put up cameras so we can monitor those intersections, and now we can control traffic from that traffic management center, and we can respond in real time to any particular emergency that may occur in the roadway system in the city, and deal with special events that are occurring in the city. Next slide, please. So, you know, there, we, we have more work to do here. We'd love to be able to continue to work with the city to improve the services for the citizens. And one thing that we need to do here is to develop a comprehensive list of all of the assets that the city owns related to public works, and establish their condition and get that into a database, as well as conducting an updated traffic study. All of this new information would help us better inform the city in updating the transportation master plan and determining priorities for spending money. We also work with our other client cities in helping bring in outside funding to the city, such as from Georgia DOT and the ARC, and now, in particular, with the Infrastructure Jobs Act, the new highway bill, we're helping cities put together grant applications to try to bring additional funds into the city. So with that, I'd be happy to bring the team up, and we can answer any questions.
All right, thank you. I'm just going to start with a few comments. I usually go last, but I really do want to frame the discussion and explain why I had you all come. The first thing is, is that we have a contract with Jacobs for $6.7 million. I think anytime we give someone that much money, we should hear from you directly, probably regularly. So if we, you know, continue, which I'm, we are likely to do, I would like to get these maybe quarterly. We are in the midst of renegotiating, or we will be in October, either renewing or renegotiating that contract. I think we now know that there are some things that we didn't include that we should have, like right-of-way maintenance or hanging of banners. There are some things that we hadn't even contemplated, like satellite mapping, or this asset mapping, inspections of bridges that are, was it under 30 feet or under 25 feet that aren't expected by, inspected by the state? They're falling down now. And most importantly, Dr. Raul talks about this all the time, that we, we are leaving hundreds of thousands, maybe millions of dollars on the table in funding that we could be getting to do more projects. I know that our residents, many of our citizens think that, that we still don't do enough, and, and we are going to do more, and I want to let, I do want to say to the residents, as we continue to improve our public works, you will see your property values go up, which means that your property taxes will also go up, not because we're raising them, but because the value of the homes in the neighborhoods that we are taking better care of goes up. And hopefully, we can put all of that money back into public works. The, one of the, one of the questions that, this is really more of a rhetorical question, but, but CFO, Ms. Dixon, I, I see on our, you know, on our, on our budget report, we have a, a lot, I, I and maybe others have been under the assumption that Jacobs was doing the majority of our public works projects. But I now, I now see that though our contract with Jacobs is 6.7 million, our public works budget is 10.8 million. Our, we are spending another 8 million on T-SLOSS, another 1.5 on L-MIGs, another several million on capital improvements and URAs, and then on stormwater. So we're talking about $40 million worth of spending. I know as we consider bringing services in-house, I think that we have to consider how many different, that we aren't just, that bringing services in-house doesn't necessarily mean that our contract with Jacobs will get smaller, because there are all of these services that we haven't been using. And if your contract is 6.7 million out of 40 million in expenditures, there is obviously lots of other people doing work in, in our city, and I want to make sure that as we're setting up the departments, stormwater is, you know, it's, it's a very technically specific thing, which is different than solid waste management, which is different than building buildings. We were, we were, I feel like it was here, I don't remember, we were in a, no, we were in a meeting at the Southwest Art Center, and we learned about a roof that needed another million dollars' worth of work, because when they took it off, they realized there was this problem, and no one could have foreseen it, except Councilman Reeves, right, they had seen it previously, right next door in Clayton County. So I just want to make sure that we have the right people overseeing these diverse things, and it, we unfortunately have one person that is, that is overseeing everything from, from traffic management to, to T-SLOSS, to stormwater, to, and we may need to diversify that. So I just wanted to have a robust conversation as we consider renegotiating our contract, and as we consider bringing items in-house, that we understand the enormity of the task that we are taking on, and we probably won't have time to get through everything today, because we do have a URA meeting and an alcohol and zoning hearing, but I hope that we can have you back more regularly to have these discussions as that contract approaches. And with that, I will turn it over to Councilwoman Willis.
One of the things I do want to ask is, we, when we get our roads resurfaced, a lot of times, within a couple of months, we have potholes, again, in the same roads that we have resurfaced. Is there a reason why that happens?
Mohammed, he's more technical.
Yes, thank you. Great question. You know, a lot of agencies, a lot of cities and counties around the nation, they face the same problem. So the issue is, if the roads were initially not built with a strong enough base, that's when, you know, no matter how many times you resurface, it's just going to last two, three, maybe five years. So the right way to do this, which of course, you know, takes more money, is to basically reconstruct the road. You, you, you take it out, and you provide the base layers, and then you provide the asphalt. So it costs more money, but of course, it would be a lot more long-lasting roadway, generally an average of 15 years.
So what you're saying is that right now, you all are just resurfacing the roads and not reconstructing the roads? So the pavement, the resurfacing jobs are not lasting five years, they're not even lasting six months, because you're basically just resurfacing and not reconstructing the roads? Is that what I'm understanding?
So the resurfacing program has been handled by the city's public works department. We, we, Jacobs, we only provide the routine maintenance. So all those potholes that appear on whichever road within the city, even in the residential subdivisions, we are responsible to maintain those.
Okay. The only thing, the only thing I was going to say is that, and I think he was trying to allude to it, is that we, I'm sorry, we do not manage the, so our LIDAR study was an attempt to guide, help set some guidance on roads that should be considered for pavement, for repaving. Unfortunately, we don't manage the T-SLOSS actual decision on how much pavement should be, what level of asphalt should be put down, or what, or how the resurfacing, like he's basically referring to, Councilwoman Gums knows, I've been in her ear plenty of times before I even came to Jacobs about, there's a subbase that has to be fixed on Enon Road, and in order to fix that subbase, and then you stop the potholes from continuing to come. But our only job is, after the resurfacing has basically taken place, when those potholes come up, then we're trying to go behind it and fix it. But I mean, it's a balancing act on trying to figure out how to stretch the dollars. And so that's, that's what you're seeing happen.
So I, I just want to go on record, thank you for the presentation. I just want to go on record and say that we're supposed to bring public works in-house in four months, and I really don't see it happening. We need a- We need a strong strategic plan, we need a strong implementation plan. With the stuff that is being done in-house now, I don't really see, like I've been on the seat for five years, I'm still waiting on roundabouts to happen, I'm still waiting on lighting to happen in our city. We did a lighting study and I'm told it was presented to LSs and not even the governing body. We have not, I mean, what's the implementation plan for the lighting? You know, equipment and buildings. We don't even have enough buildings for staff, so how are we gonna have building for public works and equipment? I'm just not in a comfortable place to say that this city is in a position to take on this arduous task in the next four months. And what Mayor said is correct. Public works, we get the most complaints about public works than any other complaint that I think in the city. I mean, on a day, on a weekly basis, I'm getting complaints about potholes, about drainage issues, about people wanting sidewalks, people wanting lights, the lights being out, and people wanna see better quality of trash. I mean, we just picked up litter on Roosevelt Highway, I rode down Roosevelt Highway and the trash cans are full again, litter. Hunter Road is ridiculous, you know? Somebody just dumped their whole construction site on Hunter Road. So we don't even have enough people to ride around our city to make sure that the litter is being picked up in our city like we should. So I just think that before this task is effectuated, we need to really have a strong plan before we call ourselves trying to take on public works in-house in four months. For me, I don't see it happening.
Thank you, Councilwoman Willis. Councilwoman Gomes?
Well, I think Councilwoman Willis hit on a lot of my points. Public Works is probably one of the biggest angst in District Two and just across the city as a whole. I know when it was a presentation from Mr. Valenzuela, we asked, where did the numbers come from? Because based off of what he showed, it looked very nice, it looked like it was something that we could do. But I still haven't gotten the information on where those numbers actually came from, so I'm still waiting on that. And when I asked about the number of vacancies, that was leading up to this question, as far as how are we able to bring such a very specialized service in-house and we have the number of vacancies that we have? We, as Councilwoman Willis mentioned, we have waited years on certain projects. I get emails every day about trash. I know there was a RFP that was presented in regards to, I guess, trying to find someone to do the litter pickup on a rotating basis. We don't know what the status is on that, I don't know what the status is on the clean litter crew. I just think that we need to have a little bit more thoughtful consideration in regards to public works because if we have 42 vacancies that are still out there, how can we affection, how can we service our residents? I think the level of complaints will increase because there will be a learning curve, there will be a learning period as far as, and I just don't think that we should fully transition as of yet. It's hard for local governments to fill vacancies. I don't understand how we could possibly be ready in four to five months to bring such a large service in-house. I do wanna thank you all for your presentation, but that was one of my concerns. And has inventory or feasibility study been done of all of what is needed in the city of South Fulton as far as infrastructure-wise? Do we know if there's a cost associated with it or anything of that nature? Like, can we start there?
So I'm not aware of one, but I would have to defer to Mr. Valenzuela completely on that one. But I mean, if we can look into what the cost of one would look like, we haven't looked into what, maybe what a stormwater infrastructure would look like. Honestly, that was, we basically used Johns Creek as our kinda model because they had just went, they just went through the stormwater process of taking over their stormwater management and it costs just like around $900,000 in order to do that side city. So we estimated that it probably would be about the same, just on the stormwater side, but I'm pretty sure with scale of economy, when you're looking at all the assets, you can probably get it lower per asset, I would say, not necessarily lower in overall dollar figures.
So, thank you for that. And just kinda going back to what the mayor mentioned, that we're spending about 6 million, it was the 6.7 million with Jacobs and about 10 million with public works. Is that correct, Mr. Valenzuela?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager and Resident of City of South Fulton. With regards to the budget, it's 6.7 for Jacobs, that includes professional services plus maintenance. The rest of the funding that you have is under T-Splus, L-MIG, it's also general services and so on. Our overall budget that we have is actually about 20, 20.2 million dollars that we have for fiscal 2022. So as you heard Jacobs and the mayor and you all, you know, we all wanna have better services and everything comes with a compensation, which I totally agree with it. There are many things that our scope, our works is in need of many things. We have a full inventory of all our traffic signals, all our bridges. It is impossible to have minor, some drainage structures, inventory. That will be a huge asset, but that is done as you go. With regards to paving management, we have that as well. When it comes to resurfacing of the roads, it was typical in the past that a road will last about seven years after you resurface. Unfortunately, this day is not because the driving conditions, the traffic conditions are not the same the way it was designed before. And also, you have to understand that in the past, City of South Fulton was rural, so the design was not designed to these current conditions. So you have many, many roads that do not have curb and gutter. Subsequently, we are inundated by water, which is the worst thing that would happen to pavement. The roads, when we resurface, we replace, at some instances, in a needed basis, about four inches of binder. Then on top of that, we top it up with inch and a half of the topping. In many of our roads, when we resurface, we didn't find base, we didn't find subbase. So with the dollar mindset, we have done about $36 million in three years for minimum staff for the City of South Fulton, that's what we have accomplished. Now, we can do better. We have one road for this year that we're gonna be doing with the L-MIG, it's White Mill Road. It's gonna be a reclamation road, that's what it's called when you have to rebuild everything.
A what?
A reclamation. So when the road is already with a paving condition index with 20 and below, where it's not unserviceable anymore. But there are many things that we can do better and I'll be glad to discuss further with Jacobs because on the initial contract, when we, when the city signed this contract, the scope of work that was advised for Jacobs was not the proper scope of work for the City of South Fulton. I'll be glad to discuss with them and I have met with them on each, on each occasion, that yes, indeed, we need to do more. Yeah, indeed, they need to be compensated more and indeed, the city needs to understand what our needs are.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. I hope we'll be able to kinda bridge those gaps that we as a council are possibly seeing between Jacobs and, and the city. So hopefully, you all be able to see a path forward. My thing this week is a positive path forward. So I just think, you know, it is a critical service that our city has, public works is one of the biggest departments, well, not right now, but, because we got a lot of work to do. But I think it's a very important service for our city and it needs to be right. And I just hope you all will be able to find a way to benefit us.
Absolutely. And just to add, I know we don't have that, but right now, we have about 20 miles that we're doing little pickup throughout the city every two weeks. And we also have increased our rightway maintenance for 20 miles as well of state routes. They're doing every three weeks.
They're doing interior roads every two weeks?
No, state routes, 20 miles. The most critical state route, 20 miles plus two roundabouts that we have throughout the city. Those contracts are outside the contract with Jacobs. And we have added the little pickup for 20 miles as well that is done every two weeks.
Have we effectuated the RFP yet or has that concluded, that process for the litter pickups?
It is going out to the public, there's an ITB, it is on the purchasing section that they are about to pull it out again now.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, stay right there, Mr. Valenzuela. Because I just wanna piggyback off of Councilwoman Gomes. So I am, I am looking at page five of the work session document. This is the report that we got from the CFO. And under public works, it says the 2022 budget is 10.8 million dollars. Says that we've spent 45% of that money in the first three months, so we're on track to spend the 10.8. If Jacobs is only getting 6.7, where is the other 4 million going? Who's getting that money?
Well, I'm sure on the contract, it's already considered T-Splus and CIP. When it comes to CIP, Buttonhead Stone Water by itself is about 3.5 million dollars.
No, there's a different, there's a different line for T-Sploß. There's an $8 million line for T-Sploß and there's a $12 million line for capital improvement. So those are separate? Or am I just reading this document wrong?
I wanna just defer to the CFO.
That $10 million budget is also gonna include their personnel salary expense and so in building maintenance as well within that $10 million.
Building maintenance, okay.
Right.
All right. And how, and how, just currently, how many employees do we have that are our employees in the city of South Fulton, public works?
For public works, you have full-time, right now, we have three employees at full-time, four employees at full-time. I'm sorry, let me see, let me do a count. We got five.
Less than 10, we got less than 10?
Yes, for, directly for public works.
Okay, that's, I'm trying to do the math, but I'm gonna go, I'm gonna pass it over to Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanna, before I make my comment to ask my questions, I wanna thank our public works and Jacobs for the work that we have started in District Four. Obviously, being a large rural district with lack of investments, for a long time, we have a lot of work to do. When I think about the issue of, we had T-Splus 1, we're now going into T-Splus 2, and I listened to the comments about how long our roads last, it almost seems to me that we would have to be in an endless cycle of T-Splus and repairs. Given the current methodology that we're using, it seems of resurfacing rather than reconstructing. Also, our roads in certain parts of the city were just never originally built for the level of traffic that is there now. So given the quality of the road and the increase of the traffic that we have had throughout our city, do we see a point in time where we'll be able to say our roads are in, for the most part, excellent condition without another infusion of funds to do major road construction within our city? That's one question. If we need an additional infusion of funds, I would like to hear some ideas, both from you, Mr. Director, and maybe even from Jacobs, as to what are some additional sources of funds we could look at as a city to bring those roads up to par once and for all, so that we would then be in a position of having to maintain quality roads, not just patching and resurfacing poorly constructed roads to begin with, or roads that were not built for the level of traffic we now have.
To answer your question, to be frank, there are some corridors that I can mention to you that do not have curb and gutter in the future, like Enon Road, Buttonhead Road, sections of Stone Water Road, that we just have to get, and to add Stacks Road, we have to add a reclamation of a road. But while we don't keep water away from the roads, we're always gonna have similar issues, even though we might build it up, build that from the subbase to the top. But also, in the past, our standards were much lower. We have inherited standards from Fulton County that have not changed for years. Now, we're working on changing those standards for the new subdivisions and the new roads. When we build capital projects, we don't build at those standards. Our base is 12 inches of JAB, is 10 inches of binder, two inches of topping, which is such a difference. A new project that we have built, we don't have those issues, but on all the projects, yes, we do. Now, when it comes to funding, unfortunately, the only funding that we have is L-MIG funds and we have put aside L-MIG funds, T-Splus funds, general funds, and mixed all the funds to make the primary needs for the city. We have so much needs, then I would say, to be honest with you, T-Splus is the best source that we can do it for the city. But we can always change the way how we choose projects for going down the road. Instead of doing resurfacing on those main corridors that we have, we perhaps do a full reclamation of the roads, we provide the curb and gutter and put the sidewalks on some of the roads.
Okay. Any additional thoughts from the Jacobs team?
Yes, Councilmember. Unfortunately, the city did inherit a lot of deferred maintenance from the county on its assets. And so it is a tough game to play catch-up. I think we have, for the next five years, through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, there's gonna be significant additional funding going to transportation and I think the city of South Fulton would fare well in competing for those funds. So there's an opportunity for a significant increased amount of money coming from Washington that we can take advantage of. The other technique that we've applied very successfully in some of the other cities that we've worked on is what we call putting plans on the shelf. We get our design plans done, we put them on the shelf, we stick, we go visit GDOT regularly and when another community has a project that's fallen behind schedule and they need to obligate their funds, we pull those plans off the shelf and tell GDOT, we're ready to go. So we think that this next five years and implementing that kind of a strategy here can help move us down that path.
Sorry, let me just add one thing. And then we shared some information with Councilwoman Sebastian about GTIB. So it's basically a grant or loan organization within the state where you can go and apply for low-interest loans, instead of like continuing to wait. If we wait for our Sploß money to continue to come in, then what happens is our road conditions are getting worse during that time instead. And so you gotta think of it, either we pay the low-interest amount or we pay the extra amount of what it's gonna cost in order to repair the roads. I mean, I have to admit, Mr. Valenzuela has a very difficult task of maintaining and determining which roads actually need to be. White Mill Road, I've traveled it several times and I know the conditions of it, so I'm glad to hear that it's being, it's on the reclamation list. But there, I think we have to think through and we gotta be more resourceful about thinking through how we get, how we bring in more grant dollars and we're prepared, like Matt said, to have things that are on the shelf, so that when GDOT comes and they say, hey, we have this extra money, what do you have? Do you have guard rail? Do you have some, anything that could necessarily qualify for this money? We've gotta be in a position in order to act at that point. Best by way of example, in Johns Creek, since 2018, we've gotten $36 million in highway road. And I know everybody thinks, oh, it's Johns Creek, Johns Creek has so much money. But the reality is, no matter what community you're in, your money stretches a whole lot further when you're only putting 20% with it. And so you think about, they've gotten 36 million, then they, and they've put 20% with it. So that just makes the roads go further, makes, we've done bridges, they've redone roads and some bridges as a result of that, that, and I mean, and that's honestly, you know, I've talked to you guys, that's the thing that I wanna do for the city of South Fulton. I live here, I believe in this city, I know that this city can be, to me, it can be the Johns Creek of South, of South Fulton. And so I think we need to think through more and more how we plan to, I'll use Councilwoman Willis's word, effectuate how we're going to. I'll use Councilwoman Willis's word, effectuate how we're going to. I know you love that one. We need to effectuate how we actually go about getting the funding that the city needs. But in order to do it, we've got to start by knowing exactly what our needs are. And that's the key. And we can't properly plan until we know exactly what we need. And then, and as we kind of think through the conversations that we've got to have as a private entity and one as a city, I think part of this is, I know you guys are out from June to July. At the same time, the same way you guys are having a hard time hiring, we're having a hard time maintaining people. Because, you know, the word is on the street. Hey, the contract is coming up for an end. So my only request of you guys, or as council and as staff, is that you kind of basically force us to come together a little bit sooner so that we can determine what's the best path for the city. So that we're not in a place of somewhat decommissioning around the time you come back because we're not, because we're in such an unstable place. I think it also gives him a leg up in knowing what he needs to do as it relates to budgeting. Because when you come back, you're going to be in the process of getting ready to execute a budget. And so I think it'll be beneficial to the entire city of South Fulton. And I say that as a resident, and I put my Jacobs hat on, and I say it again. I think we have the ability to work together. We have the ability to have a great partnership, and we have the ability to do great things in this city.
I do have a follow-up question and a comment. The whole issue of bringing Public Works inside, and maybe this is something that you can give me a little bit of insight into. Generally, most cities in the world, whether they say they have Public Works internally or they outsource it, they use a set of contractors anyway, correct? All right, I see the head shaking, yes. So the reason why I wanted to ask that question is, we currently have our Public Works department, it exists. We currently use Jacobs as our major contractor. And so one question that I have in my mind is, is Jacobs, even at the level that you are servicing our city now, are you servicing our city with the best of your expertise? Because whether we call it bringing Public Works internally or not, I have a feeling that whatever we go and wherever we go, we might still need, whether it's Jacobs or someone else, with a level of expertise that can help us deal with some of these major problems that exist within our city.
I'll say, we brought in Mohammed Ralph in November of 2021. We brought him from the city of Roswell. I, we, there was a delay in getting us another project manager. I honestly, I tell my boss all the time, "I'm glad that we waited." The level of expertise that he brings to this city is unmatched. And I believe that Mr. Valenzuela would agree, that we have brought in, he's a PE. He has his transportation certification. So we brought some of the best talent. But I'll be honest with you guys, we haven't tapped into the best talent that we can bring into this city, just based on the level of work that we're doing, right? I can bring in, I can bring in stormwater engineers, I can bring in transportation engineers. We haven't tapped into, in so many ways, I feel like the city has not tapped into what the best of Jacobs has to offer. We're only scraping at the surface.
Thank you. Again, my feeling is that it's, it doesn't feel to me as if it's either or. It feels to me as if it's how both should actually work together for the betterment of the city. It may mean expanding our Public Works department, but to do what? And it may mean expanding our contract with Jacobs, as the mayor said, but to do exactly what? And the feeling that I have is that the answer is somewhere in between. And that's the place we have to find ourselves in the next few months. Thank you.
All right, we are way behind schedule, so these are going to be the last two comments. Dr. Raul and Councilwoman Williams.
I don't want to kind of rehash everything everybody said. But I also do think we have to collectively communicate our Public Works messaging different. I'll give you an example. I'll use the Old National Sidewalks, for lack of a better word. Because we've talked about that, and people have waited for it for years, not understanding that the project might have been at the design phase versus the construction and how the funding comes into these various projects. I see that's a disconnect, and we do our community a disservice because they question equity issues because they don't understand that we're looking at these projects at a four-step, which, you know, Mr. Valenzuela, you've kind of explained, at least to me, in a way that I can understand where these projects really are in terms of completion. And so whether it's the design or the right-of-way acquisition or the actual construction, it's money has to be set aside for all of these phases. And we need to communicate all projects in a way that people understand when they're really teeing up because they don't necessarily understand. And so I think as y'all get together over the summer, as you suggested, or come together at an earlier time, think about how we communicate this to the public and send our messaging outward facing in a way that people can receive it and understand it.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yeah. Yes, thank you. Mr. Valenzuela, in the, I guess, mid-year budget request, you put in, I think, I'm counting nine positions for the mid-year budget request. Will those nine positions fully staff Public Works?
Those were the much-needed positions for the mid-year. But if we'll have to take over Public Works, we will need additional staff.
Could you?
The difference was that when we explained how we were going to budget it, some of the, the majority of the funded positions was under the Jacobs contract. So for the 2023, we're going to bring additional people or subcontractors, and others will be used out of that contract.
Okay. Can you provide us a report projecting how many positions you need to be fully staffed and what the cost of those positions would be? So that we, as we're talking about Public Works versus Jacobs, we can know exactly what it is we're looking at and exactly what it is that we would need so that we're not piecemealing staffing together?
Absolutely. I will come back to you. I will discuss with Jacobs as well. I have discussed with them for years. I would like to see a different contract, a different scope of work, and do exactly what you want us to do. I can bring it back to you, what will be the cost under the Jacobs contract? What will be the cost on a hybrid approach? And what will be the cost doing some in-house and so on? I will come back to you with those, the three options if you have desire to.
Right. And please make, if you could just please make sure that you're telling us, for each option, what the staffing levels are that would be needed to make it fully functional?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Jacobs and Mr. Valenzuela. I do want to tell Deanna, I know that you're, some of your workers are worried. While myself nor Councilwoman Willis speak for the entire council, we rarely agree. And I think that we agree, we may need you all around a little while longer. So let your heart not be troubled. We're going to, we're way past time now, so I would like to ask the council and the attorney if it would be all right. We are now at 6 o'clock when our zoning and alcohol license hearings are scheduled to begin. I want to know if we can hold our URA meeting until after the zoning meeting to just be respectful of both the presenters and the constituents who came out here in person to maybe talk about their zoning issues.
Council can vote to flip-flop, so to speak, or to move the URA behind zoning to go ahead and take care of that.
Thank you. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
Move that we adjourn the work session meeting and convene the zoning meeting for Tuesday, May 10.
It has to be two separate motions.
Okay, so we're going to just take that motion to adjourn?
Second, I mean, I made the motion second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Let's do a show of hands. Do they all in favor of adjourning?
I have that as unanimous. I have that vote as unanimous.
Okay, thank you. And I will entertain a motion.
You can just call the.
We could just, I'm sorry, you did say that. We're going to just call the. The zoning, the zoning hearing. I'm sorry, I do feel like, though, we were scheduled to have a URA meeting next. We don't need to do any, there's no procedural.
I would just officially call the zoning meeting to order. Just announce that you're calling it to order.
I move that we call the zoning meeting to order.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor? Thank you. All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the first item.
This is the Alcohol License and Zoning Public Hearing, 6:00 p.m. The first item, it's item two, item one on the agenda. This is a public hearing for alcohol license for Mingus Bar and Grill 2, CO. Doing Business As, Mingus Bar and Grill 2, for an alcohol license for the consumption, sales of wine, beer, and distilled beverages at 5425 Old National Highway, South Fulton, Georgia, 30349, Police Department.
Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Esprit, currently assigned to our License and Permit Division for Mingus Bar and Grill 2, located at 5425 Old National Highway. Has met all the legal requirements in order to obtain an alcohol license at this location, and staff recommendation is approval.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing.
I don't know if there's anyone in support or opposition in the gym. If not, Mr. Mayor, we did not receive any comments in support or opposition to this case.
All right, does the council have any comments or questions? I do want to start with the person whose district is in, Councilman Reed.
I move that we just accept the police recommendation and grant the license.
Well, we don't vote today. We just hear it today.
No, I have no comments.
All right, hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will sound the next item.
Next item is number two, public hearing for an alcohol license for the Blue Marlin Bistro LLC. Doing Business As, the Blue Marlin Bistro, for an alcohol license for the consumption sales of wine, beer, and distilled beverages at 5495 Old National Highway, Suite B15, South Fulton, Georgia, 30349.
Go ahead, officer.
The application for the Blue Marlin Bistro at 5495 Old National Highway has met all the legal requirements in order to obtain an alcohol license at this location, and staff recommendation is approval.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any for against speakers?
Is anyone in the audience in support or opposition to the Blue Marlin? Hearing none, we did not receive any written comments in support or opposition.
All right, any council comments or questions? Be good, Mr. Reed. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Raul.
This is just a quick question. This is about the one and two. Did both of these locations previously have alcohol license at them?
Not for the location where Mingus Bar and Grill.
So this is new.
The previous location did not have an alcohol license.
Okay.
And the previous location for the Blue Marlin Bistro did have an alcohol license.
All right, we good? I'm going to close the public hearing, and Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item three. This is a public hearing to consider Z22-003 and U22-001, located at 6890 Campbellton Road, as a request to rezone from C1 to C2 and obtain a special use permit for a liquor store. This is located in District Two. Staff?
Go ahead.
Okay. So. Okay, so, good evening, Councilmember. So this is kind of to get us situationally aware.
Move over.
Okay, so then to get us situationally aware, this is at Campbellton Road at the intersection where Fulton Industrial turns into Cascade Palmetto. It's where the new BP gas station is. And the applicant has requested a special use permit for a liquor store. Of course, the site is currently zone C1. And it was, the gas station came under our old ordinance, and so now we're in our new ordinance. We are required to get special use permits for liquor stores, and they're only allowed to be, they're only allowed to be in C2, which is basically why they're here requesting both the special use permit and the rezoning concurrently. It is in compliance with the future land use plan. This, the future land use where this site is commercial center. And so it is in compliance, and so that's why staff is recommending approval. If we can go to the next slide, please. So on the left screen is the future land use map. So the yellow areas are residential areas, the gray areas are industrial areas, and then the red area is the commercial area. And then we can go to the next slide.
Thank you.
And so on our next slide, this is, if we go back one, there's a site plan. You can see that the site isn't really going to be impacted. The site is already built out. And so the gas station is going in some existing storefronts that are currently vacant. You can see that there's a stream on the site, which isn't going to be impacted. And then there's also a cell tower on the site, which is staying and is also not going to be impacted. If we go to the next slide, the applicant has provided some images, the applicant has provided some images of the front of the buildings. And then on the last slide, the applicant received some suggestions for what the interior of the site might look like. These came from residents that were, you know, wanting it to be visually pleasing. And again, staff is recommending approval with some conditions. I have the staff conditions here. So basically, just to maintain the aesthetic of the community, there were some conditions for things that they didn't want to be included. So the list of things to not be included are indoor amusements, commercial amusement, automotive specialty shops, automotive repair garage, emissions testing stations, freestanding fast food restaurant, hotel motels, check cashing stores, pawn shops, including title ponds, laundry mat, massage establishments, beauty supply stores, and flea market, discount retail shops, and tattoo parlors. And then also, within 10 miles of this area, there are three other liquor stores. There's one located on Cascade Road, right at the entrance to West Park, like you're going toward City Hall. There's another one on Cascade Road, across the street from Publix. And then there's one more, a little bit farther north on Fulton Industrial. And staff recommended approval because it is in compliance with the future land use plan, but the plan and commission recommendation was denial.
I'm going to open up for public hearing. Do you have anyone for and against? It looks like we have the applicant here. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have several folks here in the audience that wish to speak in opposition. We have two people on. We have two people on Zoom who wish to speak in opposition, uh, after the applicant.
Yes, we're gonna hear from the applicant first. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Hakeem Hilliard with Hilliard Starky Law, here this evening on behalf of Mr. Amin Panjwani, uh, with this request for a, uh, rezoning and conditional use permit to support the development of a store that will sell liquor, beer, and wine at this location. Uh, just to frame the issue a little bit, we did appear before the Cliftondale neighborhood. We did host our Quarter Mile meeting ourselves and received recommendations of support from both groups. Uh, however, because there was, uh, although there were a minority of folks that were opposed to it, they were vocal minority, and we thought it would be important to frame the issue and what our request is. I know the word liquor store sounds bad, uh, but we call it liquor, beer, and wine. I've worked with Mr. Panjwani, uh, probably for about fifteen years, different locations, the same type of development. I know the quality of what he's gonna produce. And so, the picture that we showed you with the wood floors, the wood walls, the wide aisles, the high ceilings, the well lit, uh, is gonna add, uh, right now on site, there's eleven, I think, six hours of armed security on site for the entire property with this development. We're gonna be adding another eleven hours. It's gonna support that, so it goes to be eighteen hours of armed security on site. That's important, not just for the store, but for the, uh, for the entire gas station property, because you know what's happening at gas stations. We wanna keep them safe. Uh, he, uh, is intended to build a quality store. Uh, one of the comments that came up that, oh, you know, we got too many liquor stores in the area. There's not one liquor store in the vicinity of this property that is within the distance that the state or the city allows, uh, for liquor stores to be located. And I would also argue that there's not one liquor store that's proposed, that's anything close to what we're proposing here. Uh, what we're trying to do here, and, and another comment that came up in the community was that, well, you're taking forty-five hundred square feet to build this liquor store, well, twenty-five hundred square feet of it is customer service area. The rest of it is stored, so it's not actual occupable, occupiable space. Uh, there's fifteen thousand square feet developed on the site currently. There's room for twenty thousand square feet more of space. The businesses that are proposed there now are three sit-down restaurants that were, that Mr. Panjwani, when we started this process back in two thousand seventeen, before the city of South Fulton was created, uh, we talked to the community about what they wanted. Uh, he delivered exactly what they wanted. That's why I think Mr. Harold Reed is gonna get up here in a minute and tell you that he supports it, because he worked with us for five years, six years to do this. Uh, Mr. Panjwani also owns the property across the street, uh, twenty-five acres. He owns, uh, property on another corner, twenty acres. I bring that up. They're currently undeveloped. Uh, and so I say that because he is equally invested in what happens on this property and making sure that it's quality, because anything that happens that's negative will, uh, directly affect the value of his other parcels of land. And just so that you know how we worked, we worked with one of the neighborhoods adjacent, um, Rodney Little's neighborhood, I can't think of the community now, for almost a year, when we were talking about redeveloping that property back in two thousand eighteen. And the community had, we had a lot of negotiations without filing any applications, which is how he likes to proceed. Uh, we weren't really able to figure out how we could do what they wanted and what he was trying to do, so his decision was to pull back and do nothing. Uh, even though that we think that there was support for it. So, he's, he's invested in this intersection. He was the first one to come into this intersection and really show something, that what he's built is something that is not like, uh, anything, everything that he promised. There's one of the restaurants that's, uh, gonna be in, because the community said, we don't want you just to come in here and bring everything else here, and we want somebody from the community to be able to operate a business here. So, one of the restaurants is gonna be owned and operated by a community member. Uh, there's a Chinese restaurant, there's a Mexican restaurant, and the, and the community member is gonna be operating a Jamaican restaurant at the location currently. Seventy-five hun, uh, fifteen thousand square feet of built space now, another twenty thousand square feet of built space coming, two additional corners that will be developed, uh, all with the type of quality. And, and Mr. Panjwani, and I'll just say before I turn it over to Mr. Reed, um, you know, we did this in Mechanicsville, um, a community in downtown Atlanta. We worked for three years with that community to win their support, uh, and, and maintain that support. Uh, and we could call the community leaders here today, and they'll tell you that, that, that he does everything that he says. So, we're not talking about a traditional liquor store where you can go in and buy a cup of ice and go outside and drink. Not only is that a violation of the code, it's not something that we support. There's gonna be signage. He's working on putting signage up at the fuel pumps already to tell people to keep their cars locked, don't leave them running, do all the things that keep you safe, to remind people in these times all over the city that it's dangerous to even come into spaces like this. So, if you have eleven, eighteen hours of security on site, walking the property, if you go into a, uh, liquor, beer, and wine store, is what I call it, because you know the difference between a liquor store and a, and a liquor, beer, and wine store. Liquor, beer, and wine stores, you can walk in and you wanna buy some rum, but there's thirty different types, and the person at the cashier knows the different kinds and can recommend them, as opposed to going into a liquor store and getting a cup of ice and going out on the corner and sitting and drinking it. We've already had a couple of issues at this property already with eighteen wheelers parking behind the property, uh, and young people racing in the large parking lot that's there. Uh, he addressed that immediately by prohibiting those trucks from going in the rear, uh, also from, uh, blocking it so the racers couldn't do that. We're gonna replace what's there now with something more decorative and permanent until the balance of this is developed. Uh, we had some complaints about the Amazon trucks, because they like to come there in the morning during rush hour and load up all their trucks, and, and gas isn't available to the public. We're eliminating that. And so, he has a history of working with the community. We think this is a great addition, uh, to the community. I think everybody doesn't like to have a liquor store, but everybody, uh, I think appreciates having an opportunity to have something of this quality. Uh, if I can, I'm gonna turn it over for.
I was just gonna say you got four minutes. You might wanna save some time for your colleagues there.
I'm watching, yes. Mr. Reed?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Harold Reed, and I reside at seventy-five twenty-one Cole Lane. I'm here representing the Cliftondale Community Club. Uh, there were two in-person meetings which I attended. One on April the seventh, which was sponsored by the Cliftondale Community Club, and was attended by twenty-nine members of the community. The second meeting was held on April the tenth at the site. Again, uh, I was just an observer at that meeting. However, there were approximately thirty-two members of the community who turned out there. At our April seventh meeting, Mr. Panjwani and his attorney presented what they wanted to do at the site. They then allowed the members of the community to ask them questions about every aspect of what they planned to do. They answered those questions to what appeared to me to be the community's satisfaction. At the end of that first meeting on the seventh, we took the vote, yes or no, for this particular project. Sixty-nine percent of the people who voted, voted yes. At the second meeting held on site on April the tenth, again, same procedure, almost the same questions, even though there were two different set of people. However, at the end of that meeting, we took a vote, yes or no, and sixty percent of the people at that meeting said yes. Combining the two meetings themselves, we count with a sixty-four percent yes rate. What I then did was took the concerns that was, were presented by the people, and I put them into an agreement, which Mr. Panjwani and the president of the Cliftondale Community Club both signed, which was sent to, uh, C D R A, so they have a copy of it. The two things which were most pressing, which we could put in an enforceable, codified way, using existing rules and regulations for the city, was one, the size limitation, which was forty-eight hundred square feet. The second thing were the exclusions. And again, we used the exact list that was used by the county when this was originally zoned C one back in two thousand twelve, September. And it was the list which Ms. Jackson read off to you, with two exceptions. One was salon, nail salons. Nail salons were originally prohibited. However, when you codified the new, uh, zoning resolution, nail sal, salons moved into the allowable areas of C one. The other was the liquor store itself, which was prohibited, which is asking for the change. So, we had him sign this agreement. This agreement is set up such that if you approve this project, he immediately modifies his application to accept those things. Additionally, if you approve this project and you spread that agreement on the minutes, it automatically makes those part of the restriction, restricted covenants, and it will travel with the land regardless to who owns this property. For that reason, we ask that you approve this project as it has been presented. Thank you.
Alright, you all will have thirteen seconds to rebut.
Mr. Mayor, we do have, uh, five people who have submitted comments in opposition. There is a total of ten minutes allowed for the opposition, so, uh, please, you know, allow significant time for, uh, your neighbors. The cars that I received are Ms. Phyllis Reed, Lynn Reed, former council member, Naima Gilyard, Gloria Williams, and Glenda Collins.
Alright, if, if we have time, I would like to have you read those into the record, but go, go ahead.
Hello, um, my name is Lynn Reed, and I reside in the city of South Fulton, District Two. I am here opposing the rezoning of the B P gas station located at sixty-eight ninety Campbellton Road.
I'm sorry, could you, could you come a little bit closer to the mic? Thanks.
I am here opposing the rezoning of the B P gas station located at sixty-eight ninety Campbellton Road from C one to C two with special conditions. I say no to another liquor store in the city of South Fulton, District Two. To be clear, I'm not opposed to good, to good quality products or services. I'm opposed to yet another liquor store being open in our community. If District Two is called the crown jewel of the city of South Fulton, which Councilwoman Gomes has affectionately dubbed District Two, then why can't we set an example and bring in businesses that would better represent the crown jewel? Quality selections that are more befitting of the residents that live in District Two. There have been several residents that have expressed what they would like to see, such as indoor farmers, farmers markets, coffee and donut shops, and ice creamery, a tutoring space for children in the community. This is just to name a few products and services I've heard people asking for. I attended both the Cliftondale Community Meeting and a meeting held at the gas station to hear about the proposed liquor store. For the record, I would like to state, the picture that has been included for today's meeting was not what was shown to the community, so I'm confused on what will be built if this is to be approved. I'm also confused as to why the community has not actually met the applicant. We've only heard from the gas station owner and his lawyer. I wanna know why the applicant wants to open this liquor store and why this location. I received a letter in the mail regarding the proposal of a liquor store at the B P gas station, and upon receipt, one meeting had already taken place, and the next meeting was days away. So, if the community, which is the closest to this project, is supposed to be notified, I feel the notification was an afterthought, when the applicants were aware of the opposition to this project. To date, the petition circulated in opposition of this liquor store is about two hundred signatures shy of a thousand people signing they, they are against this liquor store, and the numbers, they continue to climb as we stand here today. Finally, I would like to state that I personally firsthand have observed the negative impacts of opening a liquor store that can, uh, a liquor store can have on a community. It literally destroyed a community by increases in automobile accidents, increases in underage drinking, increases in loitering and littering, and the devaluation of the community's homes. I say, no more liquor stores in the city of South Fulton, no more liquor stores in the dis, in District Two. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Phyllis Reed, and I live in District Two, in the Falls of Cascade Palms, H O A. My address is sixty-nine fifty Chilcat Court. I am a resident, and I am a community liaison for Falls of Cascade. Our community, my community, is directly behind the B P gas station. Both my sister and I attended both community meetings. Uh, Mayor, Mayor Colley and Councilwoman Gomes, you have the complete package, which includes the petition that shows right now, we're at six hundred eighty-eight, um, which was taken this morning, and it's increasing. You also have the comments, signatures by residents and community people that did not want and do not want the liquor store, and they don't want the rezoning changed, and they don't want liquor, any more liquor stores in the city of South Fulton. Also, I've, I've provided you with the zoning impact analysis that's against this liquor store. Now, I, I had prepared a statement, but I decided, you know, it would be best if I read some of the public comments that was included with the petition from this morning. Like I said, it was six hundred and eighty-eight signatures. So, I'm only reading a few of them. We want high-quality development. Why put a liquor store there just behind an established neighborhood? That addition does a false to hope in the community. It just further adds to the stigma that already exists in our city. I do not want a liquor store at the door of my neighborhood, and I have several exclamation points. I stand with everything Ms. Reed said. In addition, I am sick and tired of people not from our community peddling poison to us and taking our money back to the white neighborhoods. Next statement, because it kills families. We need business that help the community. I stand to my statement of my community members, we are worth more than a Popeyes and a liquor store. We need Starbucks, locations with healthy options, like Gusto, Kale, uh, Kale and McCrazy, et cetera. That's really not, no need to add a liquor store. Absolutely, absolutely no to the placing of a liquor store at this, I'm sorry, absolutely no to the placing of a liquor store at this intersection with B P gas. I'm sick of having nothing but chicken joints and liquor stores in my community. No more liquor stores in my community. Too much development is destroying the ambiance of our people's neighborhoods, destroying the environment, and driving wildlife to extinction. It creates more air pollution, uh, light and noise pollution, soil and wastewater pollution, traffic congestion, et cetera. No, we do not want any more liquor stores in District Two. We do not want any more liquor stores in the city of South Fulton. Thank you.
To the mayor and members of the city council, my name is Gloria Williams. I'm a resident of District Two. I live in Walden Park, and I echo the sentiments of my fellow neighbors. We do not want a liquor store in our community. It's already been well documented and proven that density and the appearance and the placement of liquor outlets not only reduces the attraction of more favorable, more positive retail outlets, but it also contributes to crime, and I feel that that would be a slap in the face to our illustrious police department, who so valiantly has done a great job in trying to reduce crime in our city. Think about it. When's the last time you had to have armed security at a Starbucks, at an ice cream parlor, at a bookstore, at a children's clothing store, at a sporting goods outlet? There are so many other options that would fit the community, be a better fit for economic development and attract more positive development than a liquor store. The sentiments of the attorney for the applicant provide subjective reasoning as to why the liquor store should be approved, but that's just his opinion. That's not fact, and the fact is that additional liquor stores have a strong correlation with increased crime. You've already had two criminal events at that property. How in the world will a liquor store reduce any other criminal events at that property? I ask city council to consider what the people want. Twenty people, according to Mr. Harold Reed, voiced an opinion in favor of the liquor store. That's sixty-nine percent of the numbers that he said attended those meetings. I don't want my community to face a negative impact based on the decision of twenty people, and I hope that you won't make that mistake as well.
Before you go, let, uh, the next speaker was, uh, Naima Gilyard. Ms. Gilyard, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can proceed, please.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, as I sit here and listen, I'm thinking about this. First of all, my name is Naima Gilyard. I live in District Four. I'm concerned about the proliferation of liquor stores throughout our city. A new plaza in an area lacking service that has a. that has a commercial character area designated with a buffer that should have a neighborhood, should have neighborhood services such as healthcare, banks, small shopping center with a grocery store, should be walkable with parking and streetscapes, et cetera, et cetera. But already, there's a gas station and a convenience store. And people who live in the area say, we really didn't even need that. There are restaurants that are going to be there and more are coming. Why should four bays for forty-eight hundred square feet be a liquor store? Even if it is a glam liquor store, it is still a liquor store when so much more is needed. The planning commission really understands it because they denied it. So the staff should deny, the staff approved it. In my estimation, should have denied it. And the council does not need to vote for a liquor store. Look at how many liquor stores have been on our agenda for the past four or five months for us to approve citywide. It makes absolutely no sense to me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gilyard. That's her time. But thank you. Thank you for staying involved as well. We are out of time. It's the council's pleasure. Would we like to give another two minutes to the people that are here? We'll have to do the balance on the other side as well.
Yeah, the applicant actually had one minute and thirteen seconds left on his time.
There was one more speaker? Can you do it in sixty? You should be used to sixty seconds. You have sixty seconds.
I will keep it very brief. My name is Whitney Kenner Jones. I live at thirty-two eleven N. Coach Street. I actually am not a resident of South Fulton, but I live just across the border in Douglas County. The young lady did mention that there are three liquor stores in a ten-mile radius in Fulton County, but I wanted to offer to you and make sure that you also consider that within ten miles on the Douglas County side, there is at least another, between three and five liquor stores that all will be patronized in this area. Our residents do shop in the city of South Fulton. We would not be in support of having a liquor store at that BP. It's less than two miles from my house. So I would ask that you deny that. But we would definitely want to make sure that you are aware that there is a significant amount of super liquor stores that sell liquor, wine, and beer on Fairburn Road, on Chapel Hill Road, two on Highway Five, all in less than fifteen miles of the proposed location. And I do think you should consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. You have one minute and thirteen seconds to rebut.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate all the comments from the public. You know, all of the comments we've heard tonight, we've heard at the meetings that we held, the difference is several of the neighbors, because they didn't believe that the store was going to function like we were proposing, went and visited Mr. Panjuani's locations at three different locations, and all of them came back supporting the project. I think one comment was they wanted to have a more diversity of culturally, black-owned wine or beer businesses incorporated with it, and he agreed to do that as a part of the project. The picture changed on the, what's showing here is because that was recommended to Mr. Panjuani to upgrade it from even what he proposed, and so he agreed to do that. So we were showing that photograph. Other uses, we're open to all the other uses that the community is talking about. That's what, that's what came out of those meetings also. And the final thing, you know, I don't like to get into petitions in doing zoning work because I think if there's one person in opposition, that's, that's a lot and that we need to deal with that. But in this instance, we read the online petition, and as we click on the numbers, majority of these folks were not residents of the city of South Fulton, or some of them were even out of state. We've got a petition with three hundred signatures right here from people that live in the immediate community. So I just wanted to make that point to the extent that those numbers matter. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I am going to close the public hearing and, I'm sorry, I'm not going to close the public hearing. I want to hear from our council, Councilwoman Willis.
So this is not my district, but directly, but I do represent half of Cliftondale. And I do deem Mr. Reed as one of my mentors. And I have a lot of respect for him. But I also have a lot of respect for why we founded the city. And it was founded out of resident determination. And what I committed to doing is hearing and respecting and the voices of our residents who we want to live, work, and play here. And we are a new city shy of five years. And there are a lot of wants. And I could do, I do understand that residents want quality development. And I just do think that we should give residents what they want. And even Attorney Hakeem, I'm looking at this petition, and even when I mark out the residents who don't live in District Two, there is a significant overwhelming majority of the residents who live in District Two that is on this petition that say they don't want a liquor store. Even before I came to the council meeting, I received calls from residents, emails from residents that is opposing this liquor store. And so, and we have a special permit process in place so we could regulate, work with residents, and determine what we want in our community. So what I'm saying is that for the owner, you have a lot of work to do to get support because I can't go against my values and my convictions and go against what the residents of the city want in their community. And so I would suggest, and I said this to Councilwoman Gums last week, is that you go back to the community. And I thank you for doing business in this community and being a property owner in this community. But what I would suggest is that you go back to the community and have that conversation with them and find out what they want to see in their community and try to work with the community to bring what they want. Because we're a new city. We, you know, immediate gratifications, it's going to take a lot to bring residents what they truly want. It's going to take time. But I think that the focus should be bringing residents what they really want in their community. And then maybe they will be open-minded one day to a upscale, but they want more, they want so much more than a liquor store, a new chicken joint, a new hair salon. Nothing against these businesses. These are great businesses. But we already have an abundance of those type of businesses in the city as a whole. Thank God District Three already has a liquor store because I would have to probably say no if someone was bringing a new liquor store to District Three because we have an abundance of those type businesses in our city as a whole, holistically. And when we make decisions, we're supposed to be making decisions holistically with the lead of our council member. And so I had a candid conversation with her, and I still want her to make a decision that's in the best interest of her district, and I will support whatever decision she makes. But I'm asking you to please, the business owner, go back to the community and ask the community what they want and try to collaboratively work with them and bring the business that they want. Because I hear Mr. Reed, even with your twenty-nine and thirty-something people that you said supported this, this petition overwhelmingly says something different. It does, majority of the people on this petition does stay in the city of South Fulton. And if you take out the ones who don't stay in the city of South Fulton, if you take out the ones who don't stay in the district, you still have about four hundred people saying no. And I'm sorry, I just can't ignore that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gums.
I would like to hear from the rest of my colleagues before I speak.
All right, Councilwoman Williams.
Yes, thank you. I think that I would like to echo what Councilwoman Willis has said. Particularly as a resident of the Old National Corridor, I have a liquor store across the street from a liquor store. And that is not hyperbole. I took the time to go through this petition and just kind of look at the zip codes. And so I do see that, yes, there are people who are outside of the district, even outside of the state. But even if we take those people out, it is way more than twenty people against this than the twenty people, I'll give you thirty to be generous, who are for it. Having a community meeting where sixty-some-odd people show up and taking that as a yes doesn't feel right to me. We're a city of a hundred and eight thousand people. And to be handed a petition with this many signatures on it, saying no, not counting the number of the emails that we've gotten that you don't know about, where people are saying no, or the phone calls that you don't know about that people are saying no. I'm not comfortable with where we're at. I agree with Councilwoman Willis that the voices of the residents need to be respected. And I would like to join Councilwoman Willis in urging you to go back to the community and see if there's something else that can be brought that will be acceptable to them. Because right now, I'm not convinced a liquor store is it.
Councilman Reeves.
Thank you all both for coming, you know, people who are for and people who are against. And I do respect the will of the people. Being around Old National and flash shows with liquor stores, we full. And so I do understand the sentiment and the mindset of the community around. But what I want to do also, Ms. Marissa, if you can provide me the list of all the liquor stores that are in proximity to that BP gas station, and I will include the ones from Douglasville. And I'm just going to get in my vehicle and drive to each and every single one of them to get the actual mile radius because there was a need for a gas station to be put there. So there is a need, and then there's future development. But one thing I cannot ignore is the voice of the people. Thank you.
Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with my colleagues for the most part. I just have a question. Who are the folks who are giving out this petition? Are they still here? All right, so Councilmember Reeves and myself don't have the names on the petition. We don't have that part of the report. But I did borrow mine from Councilmember Williams, and I took a quick glance at it. And I noticed that there are a lot of people too from across the city who are against this. And I did, like my colleagues, just see some are out of towners as well. It feels like the majority of the people are saying no, at least most of the people are saying no. And so I too have a hard time ignoring that as much as I, you know, respect some of the folks that came in support of this. I think at the end of the day, we are elected to listen to our constituents. And that's how I feel. And just let me say to those people in District Two that says that they do not have an ice cream parlor, invite you down to the great district of District Four to have ice cream at our parlor in District Four. Okay? Thank you all.
No armed guards outside. Great ice cream, though. The people who organized this petition, could I just have you stand real quick just so I can see who you are? All right, I just, I'm not going to say anything about the liquor store. I think we've all said enough about that. But I do just want to take a moment to really applaud the organizing of this petition. I come from community organizing, and I really hope we, this was really great. And we organized for a no, you organized for a no. I really would like to see you all continue this organizing. We have Parks Master Plans coming up. We got a budget and Jacobs and all of these things. If we could have this level of organization, we could pack out all of our, you know, hearings and public information sessions that we have. Because sometimes we have a problem doing that. So please stay involved. I just wanted to say that. I'm sorry, you can't, ma'am. I'm sorry, you can't. But I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Gums.
So it's part of the hearing, so that's why you're not able to come back up and speak. So I've heard from all of my colleagues, and this is something that I spoke with Attorney Hakeem and also with Alex about. The community has been very organized in their request of not having a beer and wine location in District Two. They keep saying it's another liquor store. Where is it? Because I don't know.
Cascade.
Oh, by Publix in District Two?
No, that's just.
Okay, so in District Two, there's no liquor store. And I'm not saying that we want one. I'm just letting you know that it's not one in District Two. But I do appreciate Phyllis and Lynn for organizing the petition and all of the residents that actually have emailed, called, sent message grams and things of that nature. I usually don't speak on these type of cases because there are legal ramifications behind a lot of stuff. So I kind of monitor what I say. But I am very, very grateful for you all to bring this level of sophistication in organizing your no. What I do and what I would like to see if Alex would be able to meet back with the community to discuss what other options are available, if any at all, or to see again as my word for the week is a positive path forward for any thing. Because I do know that you own the shopping center. I know you own the shopping center across the street as well. So if there's a way that we can find an opportunity to just have open dialogue of what we would like to see there. I do know communicating with the Reeds just earlier before the meeting started, they felt like they weren't being heard. They felt like they had not had an opportunity to actually share what they wanted to see within their shopping center. So I think there is a level of more opportunity that's available for conversation. So if you are open to that, and if certainly District Two residents, it is the crown jewel of South Fulton. So I do encourage you all to continue to dialogue and make that opportunity available. But again, thank you all for your engagement. And I look forward to seeing more communication between you all. And that's all that I have for this particular case.
Mayor, one last. Is the organizers of this petition, I don't know if you all are aware, excuse me, the organizers of the petition? I don't know if you all are aware, but we had to share the information up here because it wasn't one hundred complete, one hundred percent complete. Can you please email this to the entire council so that we can have all of the full petition? The mayor has the full petition, I think Natasha has the full petition. But some of us didn't get the full petition. So we're sharing documents. So can you please email it to us? Huh? Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, I'm going to close this public hearing. And Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item four, public hearing to consider U twenty-two dash zero zero.
Next item is item four, public hearing to consider U-22 dash 005 at 5829 Campbellton Road, a request for a special use permit for a waxing studio, also offering facials, lash extension, and eyebrow tinting. This is in District One.
Go ahead, CDRA.
So, I'm looking around the gym today, and I don't see the applicant.
There you go, yeah.
So, I'm looking around the gym today, and I don't see the applicant. So, we have the option to have the public hearing without her, or we can defer it. It's up to the council.
Uh, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Ral, this is in her district, what is your pleasure?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, basically, this, to tell us where this is again, this is on Campbellton Road. It's in the shopping center where the new Publix is. Um, the site is on C1, and it is in compliance with the future land use plan. Based on the code that was adopted by council in December 2020, uh, personal care services like this are required to obtain special use permits to operate. If we go to the next slide here, um, again, this is where it is. So you can see Camp Creek Parkway, um, is to the east of this, and then, um, is at the intersection of Campbell, Camp Creek Parkway and Campbellton Road, next slide. And then we can see that it is in compliance with the future land use map, which is on the right. It's everything that's purple is for commercial, is the future land uses for commercial. And it's in the pink section there that's highlighted, which is commercial again. So it isn't very much in compliance with the future land use. Next slide. And then this is where, um, this is like an outline of what it's going to look like. They have a couple of different service rooms, a reception area, a break room, some restroom, similar to other, um, uses in the area. Next slide, please. And then again, we're recommending, we're recommending approval. She's offering a variety of different services, um, body waxing, lash extension, eyebrow tinting, facials, eyebrow lamination. So just general personal care services. And the condition, um, is, the condition that staff is recommending just limits her to these things, so that she can't come and do additional things down the line that weren't approved by council per the zoning ordinance.
Alright, uh, are there any speakers for or against? I'm gonna open up the public hearing.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, we did not receive anything in writing. Um, I don't know if anyone present wishes to enter comments and support or opposition.
Alright, uh, Dr. Ral, do you have anything? Alright, well, with that, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item five, public hearing to consider TA-22 dash 001, a zoning text amendment to provide additional guidance for off-street parking of commercial vehicles.
Go ahead.
So, um, this is an amendment to our current zoning ordinance. We do have language in the zoning ordinance regarding the parking of commercial vehicles in residential areas, but we do not have anything currently regarding the parking of commercial vehicles in commercial or industrial areas. So the goal of this ordinance and text amendment is to just give us some more guidelines on that. If you go to some of our commercial areas, sometimes you'll notice that trucks are parked there overnight, trucks are parked there taking breaks and things. And so basically, that's what this, um, ordinance speaks to. So it's going to be specific to our commercial districts, which are C1, C2, which is limited commercial and general commercial, OI, which is office institutional, and then also mixed use, and that might be a mixture of residential and commercial uses put together. Um, just to give you an overview of what the ordinance says, um, it defines what commercial vehicles are. Um, it says where they can be parked, and it gives them some information on saying, like, they have to have tags, and they have to have registrations. Um, it talks about kind of, so like, for example, if you own a big box retail store, you might have trucks parked there anyway, but it says that the trucks parked there have to belong to the store, they have to be in designated parking areas. It also has some language in there about hotels. For example, if you're a long-distance truck driver, you might need to park at a hotel somewhere along your journey. So it has some language in there about that. And then it basically just says that the police department will be responsible for enforcing it. And Planning Commission recommended approval, and staff is also recommending approval.
Alright, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Are there any speakers for or against?
We did not receive any written comments in support or opposition. Don't know if anyone present, um, Ms. Collins, I know you submitted a card. Did you want to speak to this one? Okay. No, sir?
Alright, uh, Councilwoman Williams, is this your legislation?
My text, my text amendment was in the, was at the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, no, this is coming, I think this is coming from them. We've already heard, heard mine.
Alright.
At the last meeting. Am I correct? You think?
Yeah, I thought, I thought I saw your name. Well, I, I, I just have, while you all figure that out, I, I did just have one legal question.
Well, I don't...
Go ahead.
I don't think so, because mine, my text amendments were about the tractor trailers using the shopping center parking lots.
Yes, ma'am. So that's what this is, this, that's what this is about. So, for example...
That's what this is about?
Yeah. So, for example, if you're a tractor trailer, what, how we will enforce this ordinance is that if you're, so a tractor trailer is a type of commercial vehicle. And so, if you have a tractor trailer, you can park it in commercial areas, but the tractor trailer has to belong to the store, and it has to be parked at the loading docks or in designated tractor trailer parking lots. And so, this ordinance will apply to commercial vehicles and commercial districts in general, but it also will speak directly to tractor trailers.
So is, is this the same thing that, that Rebecca Kiefer presented at the last meeting? Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, thank you for helping me not be confused.
Councilwoman Gums is making her way, you're in the queue? Okay, um... Okay, I'm not seeing, would you mind putting the queue up, uh, Mr., because I, I only see Councilwoman Gums. I don't know. It may, I may need to refresh my queue. Councilmember Sebastian.
Thank you. Thank you for the information, Marissa. I do have one question. Um, and it's surrounding hazardous material. Is there any language that would prohibit, even though they might be in commercial areas, that would prohibit trucks that carry hazardous material to curtail them to parking in certain specific areas only?
I'm not aware of that legislation or an ordinance or resolution that says that. Um, I imagine there might be some state regulations, but I'm able to research that and get back to you.
Please, thank you.
Councilwoman Willis.
You, you might want to stay at the microphone. So, this, um, text amendment, uh, just to get a clear understanding, it prohibits commercial tractor trailer trucks. For example, I'm gonna give you a perfect example. When you go to Camp Creek Marketplace, you have pretty much commercial tractor trailer trucks treating their, that whole parking lot sometimes like a rest stop. You could wa, or either sometimes I ride down Roosevelt Highway, and I see commercial tractor trailers parked in the Roosevelt, in the Wayfield parking lot, just sitting there. So this ordinance will prohibit that from happening, unless they are there making a delivery, or it's a Wayfield truck, it should be at the loading dock, not parked, laid out in the parking lot.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, okay. So, the other thing I want to ask, and I'm not trying to be heartless, but we have also had issues with people parking their school buses, um, parking school buses in places they're not supposed to park school buses. So do we have anything in our ordinance that will prohibit that from happening? Or is they, are, are, are they considered commercial tractor trailer trucks, or are they in a type of category that would deem them?
I'm not sure if a school bus meets the criteria for a commercial vehicle. I will have to check on that. I know that it talks about, um, tractor trailers, box trucks, and, um, heavy equipment vehicles, but I'm not sure, um, if school buses meet that criteria. I know that, like, those big coach buses do.
Right.
But I'm not sure specifically about.
So do we have something in the code that addresses the coach buses?
Well, a coach bus is a commercial vehicle.
Okay, so...
So that would, that would, this would apply to that, but I'm not sure about school buses.
So, Mr. Hyman and Mr. McClendon, can we see if the school buses fall into commercial vehicle? And if not, can we add that to this language? Because I am getting more prevalent calls from residents complaining about school bus drivers parking their school, long school buses on the streets of neighborhoods, in the parking lot of, uh, HOA amenities, and, um, or parking them in, 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 um, you know, in places they're not supposed to be.
Yes, we can, we can look at that. Uh, I think the way this one was designed was to capture in commercial districts. And since you mentioned that they may park...
I can't hear you.
This particular text amendment, from my understanding, was designed to capture those commercial vehicles that park in commercial areas. So the school buses parking HOA amenities, we might have to bring something completely new instead of try to modify this one.
Right, but if the coach buses are considered commercial vehicles, I just want to know if school buses are considered commercial vehicles too, because they're pretty much the same thing. And she's saying she doesn't know if that ca, if that, if the school buses are considered as commercial vehicles. And so if they don't, then we need, I need to know, I need to be given legal direction, so I'll know what to get you all to bring back to the council, because we do need to address that as well. And I'm not sure why they would be considered commercial vehicles, because you got to have a CDL to drive those as well. And they pretty much are similar to coach buses.
Okay. Well, we'll look into it, and then let you know.
In some, in some, in some way.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright.
Councilwoman Gums.
Does the sign have to be erected in order for the South Fulton Police, I guess, to activate this particular zoning text? So like, for instance, I have, um, at the corner of Budner and Aldrich, uh, in District Two, there is a tractor trailers from neighboring, I guess, somebody that lives in a subdivision will park their commercial vehicle there overnight. And I guess, you know, because it's not supposed to be in a subdivision. There aren't any si, there's no parking signs, but there's no parking, there's nothing that says overnight parking. Would a sign need to say no overnight parking for commercial vehicles? And that, would that need to be erected in order for South Fulton Police officers to react, to tow, or to fine?
So, I would defer to the city attorney on whether or not it's enforceable with the sign or not. But I, when I was reading the ordinance, I had envisioned that, um, the police would see a vehicle parked in a parking lot somewhere in a place that was not designed to be a parking space for a commercial vehicle. They would ask the driver what they're doing there, what their business is. They would ask the driver to leave if they're not supposed to be there, or if the vehicle was left unattended, they would impound it. But, um, I believe the city's attorney's office might be able to give us some more information on whether or not a sign would be required to enforce that.
Because what they're doing now, they're doing the same steps that you just mentioned. However, these, these vehicles are evidently not being sighted or hidden, being hit would have be fined, because they constantly come back. So that's why I'm asking. Um, and I don't know, Attorney Hyman, if you can weigh in on that, but would the signage need to specifically say no overnight parking in these areas in order for the police to?
Signage would be extra notification, but it's not required for enforcement. I mean, the police, the police can, if their vehicle is just parked there, and they're using this kind of overnight rest stop, they can let them know, hey, look, we have this ordinance in place that unless you're picking up, delivering, you can't use this as a waste stop or sleepover. The signage would just be a visual, another way of just letting know that you can't do it, but it's not necessary for the enforcement, the way it's written.
Wow, okay. So that is something that I probably will have to talk with, I guess, the chief about, because it was my understanding that the signage needed to be erected in order for them to cite or tow. So, okay, thank you. What else do you have?
Councilwoman Williams.
She said, she said.
Um, well, I, I actually, I, I have a follow-up question to that, and I would, I would ask for more research as well. I am, I, I, I like the idea, but I was under an impression that we could not regulate parking lots. So that's, that is, that is not the case? I mean, was that's, that's a private businesses parking lot?
Under our zoning ordinance, we can regulate activity on private property. That's why it's commercial, and we're saying no commercial vehicles. We're not getting so granular, but every zoning ordinance has some impact on private property owners. Um, so that's what it's doing.
Alright. Well, yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm definitely for it. I, I also, um, just wanted to make this comment as we think about our LCIs and our overlay districts and our comprehensive plans. I'm, I am, as an urbanist, as a blurbinist, I am, I am in favor of walkable streetscapes that have much smaller parking lots, that have parking in the back, or that have parking decks, um, as opposed to, I, I think that very often developers come out here, they see that we have all of this land, it's more affordable than in other places, so they like to build strip malls and strip shopping centers with huge, you know, even some of our, our newest developments, the new, the new Publix that we have, it's very nice, I love it. But there's a, you know, there's just this sea of parking. Um, and I, and I know that it's cheaper, but I, I would like for us in our, in our planning and in our design standards, long-term, to think about moving away from that. Not only because it's not environmentally friendly, it's not walkable, but it does also create situations, um, like these. And with that, seeing no other comments, we will close this hearing. And Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item six, public hearing to consider Z-22 dash 005 and CV-22 dash 004 at 4165 Flat Shos Road, to rezon from MIX to R-5A for single-family homes and a concurrent variance, to reduce the front yard setback, reduce the side yard setback, and reduce the rear yard setback. Uh, this is located in District Seven.
Uh, the applicant for this one has requested a withdrawal.
I will entertain a motion for withdrawal. Do we, so, do we, what do we do in this, in this instance? Because, yeah, the last time we had a withdrawal, we did it all in the same meeting, so.
Okay, they're nodding yes. We need to take a motion.
A motion to what?
This is actually in District Five.
We should do accept a withdrawal. Go ahead, Councilman Reeves.
I move that we accept a withdrawal.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor will just do a show of hands tonight.
All in favor, we'll just do a show of hands tonight. Yes.
So 5. 6, unanimous. And for the record, this is District 5?
It is.
Okay.
All right, well, Mr. Clerk, please sound the final item.
He corrected it.
Okay, the last item is Item 7. Public hearing to consider Z-22-002 and CV-22-001, 8185 Spence Road, as a request to rezone from AG-1 to M-1 for a manufacturing facility and distribution center with a concurrent variance to reduce parking and to disturb and replant the 50-foot buffer. Okay, I see what happened. This is District 7.
The applicant has requested a withdrawal.
So pause. Did they... Did the District 5 applicant request a withdrawal?
They both did.
Okay, just want to make sure. Just want to make sure.
I move that we accept a withdrawal.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Let's do a roll call vote this time. District 1?
Yes.
District 2? 3?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
5?
No, I'm a... No, I'm just... No, no.
All right, 6.
I have questions on both of these, but...
I'm... Wait.
You're the last vote, Councilwoman Williams.
Okay, yeah. I just want... I mean, if there's something that we need to hear, okay, then, yes, we can... I accept withdrawal.
All right. You got that?
Yes.
All right, and with that, we are headed back for this final URA session. Ironically, we're right at the end of this agenda on the time, but we do need to have this URA meeting.
Mayor, can we have about 10 minutes to... for a personal...
Can we table? Right.
Okay, can we do 8 minutes? 10 is fine, because you're gonna take 10. You're gonna take 10.
Some people are saying they want to table the URA.
Right, we don't have many people here and it's late.
I mean, we can mo... We can do that.
We...
If there are votes, Mayor, we got to do it. We can do it.
I'm sorry, I haven't called for the motion yet. I just need a moment to process. There was a conversation about tabling the URA. Mr. Attorney, I just want to know, is that allowable? We did advertise that we were going to have a URA meeting, so...
The last technical term I have to get under Robert's rule, that's not... But you can move it to another date. You can move to set it to another date, which at that time will be properly advertised again. There's been no action taken today. The only action would be taken was that you vote to set another date.
All right, so I just want everyone to keep in mind we have really one more regularly scheduled council date before we go on to summer break, and then we may have a special session. So we're either adding a second special meeting, or we're adding this to the special meeting, or we are not having this discussion before we re-adjourn in August and begin discussing our budget. So I do believe that this will impact the budget, whatever the council's pleasure. I just want them to be aware of the ramifications of the choice that we might make tonight. Councilwoman Willis, I saw your hand first.
Mayor, would it be possible for us to have this URA meeting and move it to the last meeting of this month, which is the 25th? And then I suggested that we meet at 3 o'clock, and maybe we could do it virtually or whatever, because this URA meeting... So that we won't have to have a special call meeting in June? That's why I suggested 3 o'clock. I did. I suggested 3 o'clock to give us enough time to do it.
You did.
But people were saying that it was going to conflict with their work schedule, and I'm sensitive to that. I'm sensitive to that. But if it all possible, can we try to do it virtually at 3 o'clock, maybe, on the last meeting, the 25th?
I mean, Council... I'm gonna... Dr. Raoul, go ahead.
I was... I'm open to that, but I also know we already have to have a meeting June 14th. Is that correct? They sent us an email saying that because of the volume of the zoning cases that we needed to have a meeting.
There was... So there was a request for that. I want us to just be mindful. The May 25th meeting is going to be a long meeting. When we tell our department heads we're not going to see you again until August, they all have items they want to put on the agenda. There are items of emergency appropriation, there are all sorts of things. And when developers and builders hear that we are not going to have a zoning hearing again until August, they also are going to have a lot of items on that. So the May 24th... The May 25th meeting and the June 14th meeting that is proposed, those are both going to be pretty packed agendas. I'm fine with doing the June 14th meeting, but I do just want to... I do want to add that. And then lastly, I will say, I... Councilwoman Willis, it might be, even though it's going to be a long meeting, it might be advisable to start the May 25th meeting at 3:00. We did not get the information that Mr. Valenzuela is going to present. So perhaps if we get it now in our email, perhaps we could answer a lot of the questions and not have as long of a URA meeting as we had anticipated for tonight.
So Mayor, I'm not... Okay, I'm not gonna... I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but just like you, you know, sometimes tell us stuff is going to be vetoed, I'm going to tell you, in light of our residents fanning like they're crazy because they're hot, and in light of this condition, I'm pretty confident your veto is going to be overturned. So in June, we will probably be able to do this virtually, the URA meeting and all of that. Because it's just that we don't have accommodations. I mean, it is what it is, yeah.
All right, I need to hear from some council members on my left. I guess Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for looking left. So I am... I'm one of those that is... I'm actually against meeting earlier, okay? I think meeting at 4:00 is fine, but I also am open to doing some of these meetings virtually. I think we just... We just, as a government, need to figure this out, right? I never believed it was either/or... I still think it can be both, and it can be run efficiently either way that we do it. It is very, very uncomfortable in this gym. So I'm looking forward to the next time I get back here, the AC units would have been installed, and I don't know if we can do something about the noise, but it's... I've had a hard time hearing in this facility today. So we need to figure out our meeting spots that we can meet longer because it's not even 7:00 PM yet. Oh, it's not even 8:00 o'clock yet, sorry. But I feel like we have to sort of call it almost the end of the night because it's just too uncomfortable in here at this moment. And because of the discomfort, all the citizens almost have cleared out. So we are meeting for their benefit, but they're not here.
Councilman Reeves.
Counsel is homeless, by the way, y'all. That's just what it boils down to. We are without a home. So I'm just saying, we just should be virtual until we find somewhere we can have a permanent place that we meet for work session and for the council meeting so the public can be involved and come. I mean, that's just a common sense approach, in my opinion.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Williams.
Well, Councilman Reeves kind of stole my thunder, but yes, I think... I recognize that you are very desirous of being in person and having an audience and having people come. But I think that, as Cory Reeves put it, "The council has nowhere to meet, and the places we do have to meet are not comfortable nor conducive to having a meeting." And I think that we have... We almost have no choice but to do whatever we're going to do, whenever we're going to do it, in a virtual setting. Because the reality is, unless the city manager has, you know, magically pulled the building out of the sky for us to meet in, when we leave this building, we've got nowhere to meet. And we cannot sit here... If it's this hot in here in May, what's it going to be like when we come back in the dog days of summer in August? And I'm an August baby. So I can tell you by the time we get to my birthday, it's 100 degrees. We can't keep doing this.
All right, it appears that the conversation has shifted from when we are going to have this... when we're going to hear this item to this lack of space. I will just say quickly in response, what I am most desirous of is following the state code of Georgia, which does not make exceptions for our lack of planning in the past two years to have a space. We have identified... I have identified at least three meeting spaces that are available, and I hope that we will exercise that option. We have spent as much time, one second, discussing this as we could have heard the actual presentation from Mr. Valenzuela. So at this time, I will ask again, is there a motion for how we will proceed with this URA meeting?
I appeal your decision, and I would like to allow Councilmember Raoul to speak.
With all due respect, we did ask... I know I asked before you vetoed to bring back a calendar that would get us through the rest of the year so we wouldn't be in this place. But that's neither here or there. I move that we table the URA discussion until our next meeting. It is extremely uncomfortable in here.
It's been properly moved and seconded.
You need to attach a date to the... The next...
The next regular scheduled meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. And I'm sorry, do we have a time?
So our regular meeting is 4:00 at 6:00.
All right, it's been properly moved... Well, it's properly moved. Is that... Do we have a second for 6:00?
I would like to make an amendment for us to... Can you do 5, Councilmember? Instead of... Because our regular meeting starts at 6:00. Is 5:00 too early? Okay, I would like to make an amendment for us to do our URA meeting at 5:00.
That's fine.
I'm sorry, a regular meeting starts at 4:00.
That's what I thought, and so that's why I said...
A regular meeting starts at 4:00.
Oh.
Would you like to maybe have the URA meeting at 4:00 and have our regular meeting start at 5:00?
No, because we've advertised this. That's the problem, right? That we're running into the advertising. Are we okay?
We haven't formally advertised it. I mean, we did...
Okay, so our regular... Our URA meeting at?
5:00, 5:30. Split the difference.
Yeah, is 4:00? 4:00, our URA meeting at 4:00 and our regular meeting at 5:00?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we... I would like to do a substitute motion if you would accept Councilmember Raoul for our URA meeting to start at 4:00 and our regular council meeting to start at 5:00. She said that's fine.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Roll call vote. District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5? May. And District 6?
Yes.
All right, you got that?
Sir?
All right, we are at council comments. Did you all want to... Because everybody's hot, do you want to just skip those?
No, I have a very important com... I have a very important... I just want to go ahead and put it on the record. We have... Are you allowing me to?
I mean, is that the pleasure of the body? Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Willis.
So there has been a lot of false narratives put out about the Job Corps facility. I have invited the team from Washington DC. The National Director will be coming to the city of South Fulton at Solid Rock Pentecostal Church, and she's bringing her team. So I will be getting the information out to my district, but there has been citywide concern about the Job Corps to give an update on where we are with construction, when it will be completed, and when major construction is going to start back again on the facility. So June 1st, Pentecostal Church... I mean, Solid Rock Pentecostal Church at 4:00 PM is when this meeting is going to take place. 4:00 to 6:00 with a hard stop at 6:00. So all those who are concerned about the South Fulton Job Corps facility, please be in the house. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna save all of my public comments except for one, which is a Happy Mother's Day to all of our mothers in the city, but especially to our city's mom-in-chief, City Manager Jones, who celebrated a birthday this weekend. So happy birthday, City Manager Jones. Love the new glasses. And with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session or adjourn.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss real estate, personnel, and litigation.
A second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Roll call vote. District 1?
If you insist.
District 2? District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5? And District 6?
Yes.
All right, we are now in executive session.